Good morning. The Select Budget Committee will come to order. It is 9:31 a.m., November 13, 2024. I'm Dan Strauss, Chair of the Select Committee. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Counsel President Nelson.
President.
Saka.
Here.
Councilmember Hollingsworth.
Here.
Councilmember Kettle.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Member Morales.
Here.
And Chair Strauss.
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. Today on the agenda, we have a public hearing on the Memorial Stadium redevelopment project. We have an overview and introduction of the budget actions and voting process for the next few days, and we have a presentation of budget legislation, including Groups A, B, C, and D, including consent amendments as presented on the Chair's balancing package on October 30th, proposed amendments to the Chair's balancing package submitted on November 1st, and legislation generating additional revenue sources. If there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. I just had a brief overview of the agenda in very technical terms, so I'm going to say it in a little bit more plain language for us, and then we're going to get moving. Today, we have two different types of public comment. We have a public hearing that was publicly noticed in the newspapers of record for the last 30 days regarding the Memorial Stadium redevelopment project. We will then move into verbal public comment. Thank you all for being here less than 12 hours ago, receiving public comment as well. We will have a presentation regarding -- it's an introduction and overview of the next few days. From there, and today, there are zero votes. We will not be voting on anything today. Today is informational only. In this process, in this part of the budget, we are dead set in the middle of our two longest days, having the public hearing last night and an overview today. From here, we'll turn into some of the more difficult days, but not as long. So today, we are only doing overviews, no votes. We will look at other budget legislation, capital gains from Councilmember Moore, Seattle channel from Council President Nelson, and the payroll expense tax legislation from myself. We will review the consent calendar. Those are items in Group A that were mostly -- that were all in the Chair's package. Today, when we go over them, we will only be talking about the changes since the Chair's package. We will be doing these -- we will have these in groups labeled by departments. I will ask colleagues for you to hold questions until we get through the entire department, and then at that point, we can go back to individual CBAs within that department. From there, we will brief Groups B, C, and D. If you are the sponsor, I will turn it over to you. So we'll have a brief introduction from central staff, and then I'll turn it over to you. Colleagues, if you have questions or anything, you can ask them, or if you would like to hold your questions for one-on-one sessions with central staff, it will make sure that we're out by five. Councilmember Moore has a comp plan meeting to go to at 5:00. I also have a sound transit West Seattle -- or Ballard link extension open house at 5:00. Councilmember Moore, I just wish these departments would check the schedule, but here we are. And so I say, you can speak as long as you want, but please hold your comments and questions if possible, because there are -- you've seen the list. We've got a long list to get through today. When we move into the next few days, so that's today, we're just doing the overview. When we get into tomorrow, we will be voting Groups A and B. We'll just be going through the voting. So the Chair's balancing package, councilmembers, if you want to pull an item out of the consent package, you're free to do so. You do not need to pull an item out to speak to it. So when we vote on Group A tomorrow, if there's an item within the Chair's package that you want to speak to, you can speak to it. When we start pulling items out, if we have to vote affirmatively for 150 items, we're going to be here for a really long time. So it's just an operational process. Again, you can pull items out for individual votes. We'll then go to Group B, and then Group C is general consensus. It could have been in Group A, but we didn't get them into the Chair's package. And again, the sponsor will speak to the item. In Group D, this is the old Group C where we reserve more time for more robust discussion. So there's a lot of time. Tomorrow, we will vote on Group A and B and C. If we are not voting on Group D by 3:00 p.m., I will hold it for Friday. I can tell you, it can get kind of exhausting up here, voting for that many hours, and for Group D, where we need to have the most amount of discussion, I'd like us to be as fresh and ready to go. So we have two business days, Thursday and Friday, to vote on all of these items. It may go fast, it may go slow. We'll just kind of take it as it comes. Colleagues, any questions on the Chair's report? All right, well then, let's move into the public hearing. The Select Budget Committee will now open the public hearing on the Memorial Stadium redevelopment project. Comments only on this topic will be accepted at this time. If you have general comments on the 2025 proposed budget, those comments will be accepted at the conclusion of this public hearing. Clerk, how many speakers are signed up to address the Memorial Stadium redevelopment project?
Excuse me, Chair. I don't believe anyone, but there is one question that I'd like to just unclarify, which is--
Please.
Darcy, a remote speaker.
No.
Other than that, no one in person.
Good morning, Darcy. If you could press star six to unmute, like, are you here to speak about the Memorial Stadium redevelopment project or for general public comment?
General public comment.
Great, thank you. We'll come right back to you in just a moment.
No one?
Thank you. Seeing as there are no speakers physically or remotely present for this public hearing, the public hearing on the Memorial redevelopment project is now closed. Thank you, colleagues. We're going to move on to the open hybrid public comment period. Public comments should relate to the items on today's agenda or within the purview of the Select Budget Committee. Clerk, how many folks do we have signed up today?
Sorry, I lost my public comment.
You're fine.
We have four, yeah, four in person, and then we have 10 remote.
Thank you. We're going to take groups of 10, so we'll do in-person first, the group of four, and then we'll move into the group online. So in-person, you can stand up at both podiums and alternate. We have Brian Chu, Jason Austin, Alex Witt, and Hallie Willis. Brian, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Council. I just want to call out, I appreciate your service of coming back so soon as somebody who has that experience. Staffing Council, I know what that's like, so thank you for your service last night and tonight and today. I'm here to speak on behalf of the ESTOT Transportation Equity Work Group. I know one of my colleagues spoke as well last night, Keisha Jones, so I'll have some abbreviated remarks similar to hers. I just want to reiterate that we strongly urge Council to support Mayor Harrell's and ESTOT's levy budget centered around community engagement, transportation safety, accessibility, and equitable mobility options, and we really urge you strongly to prioritize these investments, especially for our most vulnerable communities, including low-income, BIPOC, immigrant refugee, disabled, unhoused, and aging communities. You know, as personally speaking, as somebody who works with individuals and families in the unhoused community, transportation safety and transportation equity and mobility options are sometimes some of the greatest determinants for them to get housing, particularly in their job search or housing search. So we really appreciate, you know, programs in this levy budget such as the NISPP, the Neighborhood Initiated Safety Partnership Program. So we really would appreciate your close attention to those programs. As my colleague mentioned earlier, facets like language accessibility, face-to-face engagement in community, and data-driven decisions are what we feel like are very important considerations. You know, we've appreciated the opportunity to give public comment, to give feedback, to work with the Council, Mayor Harrell, and ESTOT on this budget, and we'll look forward to advocating for more transportation equity, accessibility, and information transparency. We hope that you will work together with ESTOT to ensure the levy budget priorities can be implemented smoothly in a timely manner. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brian. Up next is Jason, followed by Alex, and then Hallie. Morning, Jason.
Good morning. My name is Jason Austin, District 2 resident and program director at the Meals Partnership Coalition. I am here today to speak in favor of investing in Seattle meal programs. I want to thank Councilmember Hollingsworth and Councilmember Strauss for supporting amendments HSD 4 and 10, adding capital and operations funding for meal programs to the budget. I also want to thank Councilmember Moore for proposing a capital gains tax to fund food security among other important services. The members of the Meals Partnership Coalition are the front line of defense against hunger in Seattle. Our 45-member organizations produce over 4 million ready-to-eat meals every year. Our members include organizations such as the Pike Market Senior Center, Lake City Lifeline, Blessed Sacrament Catholic Church in the University District, and Cultivate South Park. Every single neighborhood in Seattle contains at least one meal program that will benefit from these investments. This funding will help our members stay afloat. This year, Seattle meal programs witnessed a dramatic increase in demand from the previous year. This increased need could not come at a worse time, as federal funding for hunger relief programs are now in serious jeopardy. When people are unable to feed themselves and their families, they will resort to whatever means necessary to get their next meal. Meal programs provide stability and structure to people who otherwise end up cycling through the medical and criminal justice system at great expense to taxpayers. Again, thank you for funding both capital and operations funding support for meal programs. These modest investments in food security will help create a Seattle that is safe and welcoming to all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next is Alex, followed by Hallie. Alex, welcome.
Hello. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Alex Rios-Witt. I am the kitchen manager at Chief Seattle Club in District 1. I'm here today to speak in favor of investing in Seattle meal programs. I also want to thank Councilmember Hollingsworth and Strauss for supporting Amendment HSD 4 and 10, and that adds capital and operations funding for meal programs to the budget. I also want to thank Councilmember Moore for proposing a capital gains tax to fund food security among other critical needs. This funding has allowed Chief Seattle Club to purchase traditional meats and fresh produce in the amounts that we need that are normally out of our budget, and being able to provide these meals for our members is important, both culturally and health-wise. It brings our people together, and is important to keep traditional meals alive and in our diets. We've also been able to replace and purchase new kitchen equipment that keeps us running smoothly with large numbers of members we serve daily. Thank you again for supporting Councilmember Hollingsworth's proposal to invest in meal programs like ours, so we can continue to meet the needs of everyone who calls Seattle home. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Alex. Hallie, welcome.
Good morning, councilmembers. Long time no see. My name is Hallie Willis. I'm the policy manager at the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness, and I'm a renter in District 6. I want to thank Councilmember Morales, Hollingsworth, and Moore for their investment -- for their amendments to restore funding for tenant services. Those services are essential to keep people housed and resolve issues before someone loses their housing, and these are some of the most cost-effective tools we have to prevent homelessness. Please vote yes on SDCI 002 and SDCI 005. Rental assistance is also critical, and it's essential that we grow those investments too, but not at the expense of already modest tenant services investments. Council should avoid carving those funds out of tenant services and vote no on HSD 003A1 to keep tenant services funding whole. However, the city does need to ensure that rental assistance and tenant services are connected, so that people accessing tenant services through community-based organizations can get access to rental assistance funding to keep them housed. We also recommend that you avoid limiting legal defense to people at or below 200% of federal poverty. That's about $30,000 a year, and that's an outdated metric that doesn't reflect the extremely high cost of living in this city. If we want to prevent homelessness, we need to expand these services, not restrict them. Please vote no on the proviso that would limit these important services. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to online public comment. We do have a participant, Patricia Bowen, who is listed not present. So Patricia, please call in now. We have now 11 folks who have signed up online, and so Patricia, you've got about 20 minutes right now until we'll call on you. So we're going to move through this. I'll call everyone in the order in which they're registered, and then we'll go one by one. We'll first have Alberto Alvarez, followed by Celestine Berry Smith, Ankor Dehut, Ellen Green, Patricia Bowen if she calls in, Shumya Tripathi, I said it wrong, the last name, it's not Phoenice, it's Phonika Zhang, Paulina Noblock, Darcy Buendia, Kate Rubin, and BJ Last. With that, starting with Alberto Alvarez, I see you're already off mute. Alberto, thank you, welcome, good morning.
Good morning. Affordable housing, worker protections, progressive revenue. Council, you know the spiel by now, but I want to take a moment to point out how well the budget meetings have been conducted. When the public is allowed to speak, to voice their needs and opinions, true governance is achieved, respect is earned, and out of all the meetings I've followed, it has clearly proven that people will maintain order as long as they know they will be heard. To Budget Chair Strauss, well done. To Councilmembers Hollingsworth, Moore, Morales, Saka, and Strauss, please work together, reach out, and partner up on a budget that will build housing, protect workers, and bring in the revenue needed to build a city for the working class. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you. Next is Celestine Berry Smith. Good morning, Celestine. I see you're here, star six to unmute. You're off mute, welcome, take it away.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Celestine Berry Smith, and I manage Solid Ground's tenant services program. I want to thank the Council, especially Councilmember Morales, Moore, and Hollingsworth for their efforts to fully fund tenant services. When tenant services are fully funded, we can help renters problem-solve issues before they reach a point of eviction or needing rental assistance. For example, a call came into our voice message line from a Seattle tenant whose unit flooded due to weather, who was questioning why their landlord was insisting the caller move out, did not want to pay for displaced lodging, and increased the rent without issuing a 180-day notice. Our tenant counselor educated this caller on renters' rights they were unaware of and helped avoid a potential future eviction notice. In 2023, over 1,700 renters in Seattle and King County got support through our program at Solid Ground. With more people homeless in our city than ever before, and with eviction rates at historic highs, we need tenant services programs to be fully funded. Please support Councilmember Morales's amendment. Thank you for considering our comments.
Thank you, Celestine. Up next is Ankor, followed by Ellen. I see you're here now, Ankor. Star six to unmute. Thanks, welcome.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Ankor. I live and work in D-7 and D-6. I'm calling to give public comment on the city budget and to voice support for projects like the Route 40 Transit Multimodal Corridor Project. This was a project with over four years of community engagement. It'll deliver safety improvements for all users and reliability improvements for transit users along the corridor. Bus-only lanes, bus bulbs, curb extensions, and median islands are proven tools, and the city should continue to implement them. The Route 40 is the type of project that Seattle should deliver more of to meet our Vision Zero and climate commitments. I'd also like to support the use of automated camera enforcement revenue back into traffic safety and set up as an indefinite funding source for other projects. The ultimate goal should be to make our streets safe by design and infrastructure and remove the reliance on automated enforcement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next is Ellen Green and Patricia Bowen. You have still not called in, so we'll have Shumya Tripathi after Ellen. Welcome, Ellen. I see you're here, star six to unmute. I see you're off mute, welcome.
Hi, my name's Ellen Green, and I'm a District 3 resident with the First Hill Improvement Association. And on behalf of First Hill, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you all, and thank Councilmember Hollingsworth for her proposal to include critical maintenance funding in the budget for First Hill Park. This park is an essential green space in one of Seattle's densest neighborhoods, where open spaces are incredibly limited. Every square foot of green space matters to this community. First Hill Park underwent a community-led remodel in just 2021, testament to the neighborhood's care and commitment to this park. However, without consistent funding for maintenance, that investment is now at risk, because without regular upkeep, the park is quickly underutilized and attracts unsafe and unsanitary conditions for all. And to be clear, maintaining First Hill Park isn't just about keeping it pretty, it's about keeping it activated and safe. When parks are well-maintained, they are naturally more inviting for positive youth. So please help us in creating a thriving urban environment and prioritize funding for First Hill Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patricia Bowen is still not present, so we'll move on to Shumya, and then I think it's Phonika, but my apologies for getting it wrong so many times. Shumya, I see you're off mute, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. My name is Shumya, and I'm the Policy Director at Asian Counseling and Afforell Service. As a service provider to over 30,000 Asians, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islander clients in King County, ACRS is urging Council to protect and invest in our city's most vulnerable communities. With more clients and communities on the streets than ever, we ask that Council protects the entire Jump Start spending plan, which includes the 62% investment in affordable housing. But we need to not only invest in affordable housing, but also invest in the structures that prevent homelessness and support our currently unhoused, including increasing rental assistance, fully restoring tenant supports, and fully funding 300 shelter beds, day centers, and rapid rehousing services that have been funded with $110 for several years. Additionally, we have seen funding for gender-race violence prevention services lessen over the last few years, while the needs for our A and NHPI youth and other BIPOC and TT BIPOC youth who are facing -- who are vulnerable to traffic and violence are very, very high. And while we recognize that we are facing very major deficits, we are also trying to accuse between essential services that our community members need. This reaffirms our city's need for additional progressive revenue sources that can support housing, shelter, and human services. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Up next is Phonika, followed by Paulina Noblock, and my apologies for getting your name wrong. I see you're off mute, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, councilmembers and Chair Strauss, appreciate the effort. My name is Phoenika Jong, and I am the Community Policy Specialist at Solid Ground. And my colleague, Patricia Bowen, who manages the Benefits Legal Assistance Program at Solid Ground, unfortunately had to step away, so she won't be able to make comments, but she did want to thank the Council for restoring funds for legal services for people who are trying to access public benefits, and we hope that you all will finalize those in the consent package. We wanted to share some gratitude to Councilmember Morales and Moore and Hollingsworth for their amendment intended to fully restore tenant services funding, and we ask that the Council support this amendment to keep tenant services whole and reject the amendment to take funding away from these services to fund rental assistance. As you heard from another commenter from our tenant services program, rental assistance is really crucial, and we fully support those investments, and tenant services programs can help people avoid needing rental assistance in the first place or avoid reaching that point of eviction. And so we think that this is a really important thing to keep whole in a time where we're going to expect more renters struggling. Lastly, we'd like to ask you all to hold off on making permanent policy changes to Jump Start during the budget process. Numerous community groups have worked with the prior councils to pass the original Jump Start spending plan, and with such a major change to such a major revenue stream, we hope that there's a more thorough stakeholder engagement process. And along with same lines, wanted to thank Councilmember Moore for introducing the capital gains tax and recognizing the need for more progressive revenue to fund critical services. Thank you all so much for your hard work during the budget process, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Up next is Paulina Noblock, followed by Darcy Buendia. Paulina, I see you're here, star six to unmute. You're off mute, welcome.
Hello, my name is Paulina. I'm a renter and live in Seattle's Fremont neighborhood, which is King County District 4 and Seattle Council District 6. I commented a continuation of yesterday's public comments in the context of the 2025 to 2026 budget. Wanted to say that I've been volunteering in the U District at the RUSE homeless shelter for a long time now, where they've been providing warm beds, meals, and connection to services to young adults who deserve enough sleep in the rain, just as much as anyone else. RUSE Shelter could lose about $100,000 in annual funding, and generally, there are 16 homeless service projects facing 5.1 million cuts over the next two years. Decreasing homeownership population in unhoused continues to be a top issue for voters and residents, and poll after poll of voters and residents in our city, and I urge our councilmembers to keep that in mind and to protect the Jump Start spending plan, including the 60% investment in affordable housing, so that I, as a renter, guests at RUSE Shelter and everyone in our city have the ability to stay here to live and work. Thank you.
Thank you, Paulina. Up next is Darcy Buendia, followed by Kate Rubin, and then BJ Last, and that will be our final speaker. Darcy, welcome. I see you're off mute.
Good morning to the Council. My name is Darcy Buendia, and I am co-executive director at Hunger Intervention Program, a renter in District 3, and a longtime member of the Meals Partnership Coalition. Like some of my colleagues before me, I am here to speak in favor of investing in Seattle meal programs. I'm thankful for Councilmember Hollingsworth and Strauss, who have supported amendments HSD 4 and 10, which add capital and operating funding for meal programs to the budget. I also would like to thank Councilmember Moore for proposing a capital gains tax to fund food security among other critical needs. New revenue sources are so needed. This proposed funding is critical to meal programs, big and small. In coalition meetings, it is painfully clear that we are all serving more meals and doing it with less financial support than ever. Many of us are facing the sobering decision to deepen our debts or let our neighbors go without meals. At Hunger Intervention Program, we are struggling to keep our senior meal delivery program running due to financial restraint. This particular meal program reaches our most vulnerable, often homebound and resource-starred community members. Seattle is strong enough to support every citizen, and this funding helps make that a reality. Funding like that proposed in HSD Amendment 4 and 10 fills a serious funding gap for vulnerable community members. Funding like this goes so far for a meal program like mine. Funding like this makes Seattle a safer and stronger place for every community member. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Darcy. Up next is Kate, followed by BJ. Kate, I see you're here, star six to unmute. You're off mute, welcome.
Hi, my name is Kate Rubin. I'm the co-executive director of the Seattle and a renter living in District 2. I would like to thank Councilmembers Morales, Moore, and Hollingsworth for sponsoring Amendment SDCI 005A1 intended to fully restore tenant services funding. However, due to the confusing way these services were combined with rental assistance in the mayor's budget, another $527,000 is needed to restore this funding and halve the impact the amendment intends. I urge the Council to support this amendment and explore any additional efforts to fully restore tenant services funding to 24 levels and reject HSD 039A that redirects $527,000 for rental assistance from tenant services under SDCI to HSD. Acknowledge that tenant services and rental assistance distributed by tenant services organizations are distinct needs. They should not be pitted against each other for-- They should not be pitted against each other for funding as they are currently. However, because SDCI is managing the tenant services contract, to reduce administrative overlap and ensure that rental assistance is used effectively, it should be distributed by the same department. I strongly oppose the budget proviso SDCI 06A that limits eviction legal defense proceedings to clients with incomes at or below 200% of the federal poverty level and requires income verification reporting. This would create a massive benefits cliff that would essentially exclude all full-time workers and many retirees, even those who are spending more than half of their income on rent. Given that our cost of living is 45% higher and housing is 112% higher than the national average, facing anything on federal income limits is a fundamental disregard for the realities that Seattle renters face. Finally, while I understand the role of the Jump Start Payroll Tax, Payroll Expense Tax in balancing the budget, I urge against making it a permanent fix to the general fund shortfall. Please reject proposals to permanently alter its spending plan and instead convene the Oversight Committee to explore all options, including new revenue, without diverting funds from EDI, Affordable Housing, and Climate Programs. Thank you to Councilmember Moore for inter-
Thank you, Kate. Last, we have BJ Last. I see you're here. Welcome, BJ. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is BJ Last. I'm a D6 homeowner, and I support the Seattle Solidarity Budget and all nine guarantees. I'm really disappointed with the way that council is trying to use this budget to advance policy items that failed during the year, like attempts to cut minimum wage for gig workers and tipped workers, which failed. This budget now goes ahead and does that by defunding OLS. OLS, Office of Labor Standards, so far this year, has recovered over $6.4 million in wages stolen from workers. That shows what absolutely vital work that they are doing to keep, well, honestly, well, to fight crime, because wage theft is crime, even though y'all typically don't refer to it as much. So OLS should be actually getting fully funded and expanded to help people get their pay and stay housed. Also, this budget has effectively gut rental protections, which council had talked about doing earlier this year. The budget does that by gutting tenant services and making eviction defense pretty much unavailable by putting in income requirements that are absurdly low for the city of Seattle. So I would urge council, if they don't want to actually roll back tenant protections, to do what the last caller laid out in terms of which amendments to accept and which to reject, because these cuts to OLS, tenant services, and eviction defense aren't due to a lack of funds. At the same time, SPD is getting $39.5 million for 212 ghost cops. And these ghost cops all got a massive raise from last year. You can see this in if you look at any of the central staff memos from this year and last year. This year's cost of a ghost cop is $183,000. Last year, it was $142,000. So while we're cutting pay, not giving human service workers a pay, cutting labor protections and tenant services, ghost cops are getting a massive raise. On top of that, that doesn't even count the millions that SPD gets for Harbor Patrol, despite council's own report showing that SPD has absolutely no jurisdiction on any waters and 11, nine or 11 agencies also do search and rescue there, making them purely re-
Thank you, BJ. And feel free to email any additional comments into council. We see a late arrival in our public comment period when Mr. David Haynes. David, you are not present right now. I will try to stall for just a second to see if we can't get that to come in. Otherwise, please feel free to email your public hearing comments as well as your general public comments to council@seattle.gov. I'm going to stall just one more second to see if we are able to get you in. And unfortunately, we do need to move forward. So there are no additional registered speakers remotely or physically present, and so we will move on to the first item of business today. Director Noble, Deputy Director Ho, I want to first start out by thanking you and your team. I'll have the clerk read the item into the record in just one second, but what many folks don't know is that we worked really hard, you worked really hard to get the agenda for these next few days out with enough time for the public to see the agenda before the public hearing last night, which required you to work over the weekend and on a holiday. So I just want to thank you. You've been going nonstop since September 24th, and it is now November 13th. So with that, thank you. Have the clerk read the short title into the record.
Agenda item one, introduction and overview for briefing and discussion.
Thank you. Over to you. Sorry if I stole your thunder with my chair's report. It was my verbal test from the information you've presented to me.
All good, thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Yolanda very quickly here to kind of set the agenda for the day.
And I'm so sorry. I forgot my one post note that's on my microphone. Colleagues, we have hot coffee in the green room. There's Cliff bars. Please feel free to grab some if you want. It's for everyone. Back to you all.
Okay, great. Good morning, members of the Select Budget Committee. I am Yolanda Ho of your Council Central Staff. Before I start talking about our overview, I want to also thank my team, our team, for their incredibly hard work of turning around close to 170 budget amendments in a very short period of time and working with you all deftly to make sure they reflect your intent and will facilitate our conversation today. So with that, I will turn to the overview of what is in store for the remainder of this week and going into next week. So we're going to start off today with talking about what we are categorizing as other budget legislation. This is legislation that is on a slightly different track because just timing issues and other considerations. So today, Central Staff will be describing those items for the committee and also facilitating discussion there. Those items will be for a vote on Tuesday, next Tuesday, the final committee meeting of the Select Budget Committee before adoption of the budget. Any amendments to those pieces of legislation that will be presented at the front of our series of presentations needs to be submitted to Central Staff by noon on Friday. So it's a quick turnaround. That's why we are presenting those at the front end of all our presentations. Next, we will briefly describe the budget legislation that has no proposed amendments that were transmitted with the budget. This is proposed as a legislation consent calendar. Ben will describe those briefly for your awareness, and then the intent is to vote on those pieces of legislation. Next, we will be presenting on budget legislation that has proposed amendments, and there'll be, well, three items in that category, and then votes taken beginning tomorrow on those. And then finally, of course, there are the many 164 amendments to the Budget Adoption Ordinance, and we will be describing those today, and we will be voting on those amendments, only the amendments, tomorrow and possibly Friday if needed. And then that will be voted on on the 19th on the bill as amended. So that is the plan of action, and as you have noted in the agenda packet, those 164 amendments are organized into Groups A, B, C, and D. So for today is discussion only. So just want to make sure everyone knows, don't get ready to vote. That will commence tomorrow, and we will provide some brief reminders on motions that are common during Budget Committee that are not common during other times of the year. So we will give you a brief refresher on scripting on those items, but today, we are just talking about all the stuff that is before you on the agenda. So as I mentioned, we will be talking about the budget legislation that will be ultimately voted on on next Tuesday. So that will be our first round of presentations, and we'll note some initial amendments to, in particular, the Jump Start Payroll Expense Tax policies, and kind of answer questions and kind of help the committee discussion. Then we will move on to the legislation consent calendar and then go on to budget legislation proposed. So, sorry, the budget legislation consent calendar. Ben will briefly describe the group as a whole, and then he will pause at the end to answer any questions. And then with budget legislation with proposed amendments, those will be individual presentations. The first one should be very short because it was actually just a technical amendment that we noted needed to happen yesterday. So we had to pull that one out of the consent calendar. Otherwise, it would have been included because there was nothing really substantive there for you all's consideration. And then we will move on to describing the amendments in the, oops, that should be the 2025 Budget Adoption Ordinance, not the 2024. So anyway, here we are. Group A is going to, should look familiar to you all. Those are mostly, those are all amendments, almost all the amendments that were discussed on October 30th that were included in the chair's balancing package. Group B is currently only one item that is proposed as a substitute to vote in Group A, and then Group C is another proposed consent amendment package that consists of ideas that were submitted on November 1st by various members of this committee. And then those are proposed for a single vote to kind of help expedite the voting because it's a lot of voting. And then Group D is amendments that were identified by the chair as needing and warranting additional discussion and thus included in this individual vote category. So the plan of action today, just for your awareness, is that because we already presented the items in Group A individually, we're going to have various central staffers read each title of Group A by department into the record. So they're going to proceed by department. They will pause at the end. They will also note if there are any changes between October 30th and today for your awareness and allow for any questions. So after each department is completed, analysts will pause to allow for questions, and the intent is to move through that fairly speedily so we can get to kind of the new items that have not been presented to the committee previously.
Thank you. Deputy Director Ho?
Overall, it's an ambitious agenda, a busy day, but the goal here is that you will have seen everything that will be potentially up for discussion before you're asked to vote on any individual thing. So that's really the purpose of the day, is to give you a comprehensive view of all the possible things that are under consideration, a quick review of the balancing package, but then the new materials as well. And again, you'll have seen everything, and then as once you start to commence voting, you'll have that full background.
Yes. So the intent is for tomorrow, the group, so the Group A presentation tomorrow will be even shorter so that you can move towards voting, right? So we will, we will talk about them today, but then tomorrow, they will be just described as one group, and then folks can do, you know, you can make your motions and all that. So our intent is to have the conversation today so that tomorrow can be focusing on the voting and the motions and all that, and having that discussion around the amendments themselves and what you all are planning on to do. So that is how we are structuring this, this series of meetings.
Thank you, Director and Deputy Director. I'll add just some operational details here, and colleagues, if you have any questions on the presentation, this is the time. I will just say that we've engaged in a couple of budget reform processes, process reforms this year. You'll be seeing when it comes to full council and the committee for a vote, we are using the consent calendar, which is different than in past years where we have had to take a voice vote on every single bill, which takes hours. And so that is part of why we are using the Groups A, B, C, and D, so that we can reserve more time for you to speak than for you to say yes or no, because that's, it ends up two hours of everyone saying yes for two hours, and that's not very productive. So trying to save some time. Colleagues, any questions, comments on this overview? Again, amendments to this, to the payroll expense tax and the capital gains or any of these other due by Friday at noon. Seeing no questions. I think we're going to move on to the next. Do I need to read in the next agenda item? It's just the same one. So just keep going. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Strauss, Vice Chair Rivera, and members of the Select Budget Committee. I'm Tom Mikecell with your Central Staff. So this morning, I'm going to brief you on two pieces of legislation regarding a city capital gains exercise tax, starting with the legislation that imposes the tax and then ending with a bill that allocates the revenues from the tax. So first, I'm going to give a little bit of background because the city's tax is based directly off of a state tax of the same type that was imposed a few years back. Specifically, that tax was adopted by Chapter 196 of Laws 2001 of the State of Washington Legislature, and it was effective of July 2021. That tax imposed a 7% rate of tax on long-term capital asset sales above two, minimum standard deduction of $250,000. So that was in $2022. The threshold has since been inflated, and I'll cover that a little bit later in the presentation because that applies to how the Seattle taxes is set up. The proceeds from that tax were deposited into the Education Legacy Trust account in the state and the Common School Construction Account. So the tax was challenged and was successfully, was maintained to be a constitutional tax, exercise of the state's taxation power. Their case was Quinn versus State of Washington. And then finally, this tax has been collected for two years. In the first year of collection in 2023, $840 million were collected by the state. In the second year, $371 million were collected by the state in 2024. So let's go to the next slide. So that was the state's tax. This is the city's tax now that we'll talk about in terms of structure. So the structure is the same, which has benefits in terms of compliance and administration and forecasting of the revenues for the tax. The one key difference is that the city's tax is, of course, applied only within the city of Seattle jurisdictional boundaries, and it's a 2% tax instead of a 7% tax, and it's in addition to the state's tax. So I mentioned the inflationary adjustments. So there has been one inflationary adjustment to the state's tax since its 2022 initial imposition, and that brings that standard deduction up to $262,000 for this year. So that is what the current city tax before you is based on that threshold. There is additional language within the bill that keeps that threshold up to date with the state's tax. So every year that there is an inflationary adjustment made by the state, the city's tax would inflate in parallel. So in terms of other things that are standard deductions from the tax, any amounts prohibited for taxation by the state or federal constitution, gains from the sale of a qualified family small business, up to $105,000 of charitable deductions above a minimum standard deduction of $262,000. And as I said, those, all those thresholds are inflated automatically each year by inflation. And I'll just look at the next. So then there's also exemptions, and so the difference between a deduction and exemption will be, if you're claiming a deduction, that means you're submitting a tax return. However, things that are exempt, if you're fully exempt, you don't even have to submit a tax return, and a lot of, and most of the taxpayers in this, in this city would be, or potential taxpayers would qualify, would not qualify because of the exemption, because one of the key exemptions is real estate sales. So this tax would not apply to any sales of real estate in the city. Furthermore, retirement accounts, which is, you know, a lot of, lot of potential taxpayers have retirement accounts, all the gains within those accounts are fully exempt under this tax. Condemnations, livestock, commercial fishing, timber, and then goodwill from an auto dealership sale are also similarly exempt, so no, no return would be if that was the only type of tax liability. Finally, the tax would be effective on January of 2026, January 1st, with the first year, the first collections coming in April of 2027, so about a year and a few months after the tax is imposed. And so these are just some really simple examples, kind of to show the, how the exemptions and deductions work. So in this first example, let's just assume that a resident sold $1 million of stock, and the original basis when they purchased that stock was $700,000. And so now they're selling it, and they've realized the long-term gain of $300,000. So first step, apply the standard deduction to $162,000, which brings you to a net gain of $48,000, apply the 2% rate for a $960 tax. Next example, so this is the real estate exemption that I mentioned. So someone sells a house in 2026, originally purchased it in 2010 for $200,000. They sold it for $1.2 million, so that's a capital gain of $1 million. But because that property sale is completely exempt, there's a 100% exemption of $1 million, so there is no, there is no capital- So there is no, there is no capital gain in this, in this example for which to apply the tax. So let me pause just real quick before I move on. Okay. Okay, let's look at the next slide.
I would just say, run through it all. I'm going to pass it over to Councilmember Moore once you're done with your presentation.
And so, so now we're going to talk about the revenue from the tax. So I guess to, to start off, because the tax would apply in 2026, the first collections will be in 2027. So, so this exercise is, is estimating revenues for a tax two years from now based on limited data. So this estimate was developed by Director Duris of the Office of Economic Forecast for the city and really appreciate the, the work that they did. However, this, there's a lot of uncertainty that's embedded in it. Because of that, what we're providing is a range of estimates as opposed to like a single number to hone in on. So within that range, there are a lot of, there are assumptions and then data that the information is based on. Primarily there, because this is a state tax, there is a state forecast that they can rely on to kind of generate some of the information. As I mentioned, the first year of the state tax was $870,000 or so. The second year dropped to 370. So, so that indicates a lot of the volatility of the tax at the state level. There is data for the 2023 tax that is available to us, available to the Forecast Office specifically, that, that tells how many taxpayers paid the tax and more so, how many of those potential taxpayers are in the city. So gives us a sense of how many people would be liable to pay this tax if it were imposed. At a high level, there was, so there was information attached with the fiscal note for this bill that indicated that, I believe, the state tax was received by about three, 3,600 taxpayers in 2023. So a very small number of taxpayers at the state level. And then the city level was, was smaller than that. I believe it was about 163 total taxpayers that, that paid the tax at the city level. And so what the Forecast Office did is apply those relationships to the state's forecast to generate a range of estimates, including how many potential taxpayers they would be, what they are as a percent of the statewide share, and then estimates about compliance. So the state assumed that compliance, that the, the percent of taxpayers that would comply with the tax would be lower in the beginning and grow in future years as they, as informational efforts were improved and compliance was improved from starting from an 85% compliance rate up to, I believe, 95%, 95% compliance by 2026. So that's one assumption. However, an alternate assumption would be that compliance did not pick up and that it stayed low. So the range of estimates that the Forecast Office provided was for 2027, $51 million at the high end. And so that is using a, basically a higher level of compliance for the tax and a low taxpayer response. So elasticity, basically, when you raise a tax, you expect some behaviors to change. So they're anticipating at the high level that there would be not a lot of response to the tax. And then, and then finally, that, and this is kind of a, a different assumption about, about the share of tax and the amount of growth in the stock market, essentially. In the, in the state's forecast, they only assume a 13% growth rate coming into 2025. However, the Forecast Office looked at some IRS data for returns and indicated that perhaps there could be a much greater growth going into 2025 out of 2024 as taxpayers monitored a ballot initiative at the state level that would have repealed the state's tax. So the implication is they were waiting to see what the, what result of was of that ballot initiative before they sold, sold stocks to generate a potential gain. Now that has been resolved, that initiative failed at the ballot. And so now the, the alternate assumption is that those grains would be much higher than what's included in the state's forecast. So that's the $51 million range. The $16 million, this is the low end of the range, is an assumption that the taxpayer compliance stays at 85%. The response to the tax at the city level particularly is, is high, so a lot of drop off in, in, in receipts because taxpayers changed their behavior, they structured the way they sell their assets to generate gains. And, and to be quite blunt, they perhaps changed residents. And so because this is a, a locally imposed capital gains tax and it applies to people that are assumed to be of high net worth, they have options and are better prepared to respond to a local-only tax. None of it's a guarantee, but it is, these are just the considerations that are implicit in forecasting the revenue from this type of tax. However, if the tax was imposed, even if the tax is not imposed, we will get successive revenue estimates in 2025 and 2026 that will help fine tune that range when time comes to budget the revenues here in the city. And if we could look at the next slide, I sort of have talked a little bit about some of these risks with the estimate. One is the, the small number of taxpayers. I think I said 106. So 85% came from 163 taxpayers. There was actually a larger group, 816 taxpayers that were included in the 2023 collections from the state. It's mostly equities because of the exemptions and the standard, because of the exemptions that are applied to real estate. And it all depends on where the taxpayers domiciled. So basically, what do they, where do they call their home? What do they consider their home? And there are specific definitions in the bill that define what that means. So there was a memo again, I mentioned that the Forecast Office attached. They, you know, referenced that there's a lot of volatility, a lot of uncertainty in this tax, and that it could, even though there is a range, it could still come in higher or lower than that range. And now if we could look at the next slide. So this is some budget considerations. One is that I, I mentioned the first revenue from this tax would not be until 2027. There are implementation costs, and so these are just rough estimates that would be informed by future budget requests. And, you know, in this case, I would, would thank the Office, our, the Office of City Finance and Department of Finance Administrator, Administrative Services for providing this information under a short timeframe. But they did indicate that there'd be one-time systems costs, so getting their systems up to date to collect, to collect this information of a million dollars and then ongoing costs, including systems and staff of 1.2 billion per year. They indicated that they would require 18 to 24 months to implement, which does not necessarily pose a problem in this case because the first collections would not be until 2027. And then again, this is just a fiscal note estimate. The, you know, actual costs would require further analysis and be part of a budget request. And then finally, this is kind of in the caveats and risks realm. Budgeting these revenues are made in the context of a high level of uncertainty. And some ways to compensate for that uncertainty would be either to use the low end of the range or, or to in fact wait for the first year of collections to actually come in before making budget allocations. And I believe that is the final slide for, so I can pause about the actual tax before we talk about the, the use of proceeds bill.
Thank you, Tom. Councilmember Moore is sponsor of the bill. You are recognized. I see Council President has her hand up. Over to you, Councilmember Moore.
Great. Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you very much, Tom, for your presentation and your work on this. So I'm just going to make some general remarks, which I sort of made them already, which is, I recognize that most of us came to this position talking about being fiscally conservative and prudent and wanting to do a deep dive on the budget before we talked about progressive revenue. And I think that we've done that thanks to the, the leadership of Chair Strauss. I think we've engaged in an unprecedented deep dive and review, and I really do appreciate that. I know there was a little back and forth about whether it was technically an audit, but nonetheless, it's been very much a thoughtful review. And through that, we've, we've also had the mayor present to us a plan to deal with our $270 million deficit by looking at payroll expense tax money to cover that in the general fund. And I think we've done a good job in trying to cover that deficit and maintain, remain true to the values that we've expressed. But it became very clear to me in that process that we still are falling short on critical areas. And while our budget does have money for rental assistance, it does have money for homeownership down payment assistance, and it does have some money for food insecurity, all of those funds are severely lacking to the level of need that we have. And I think that that's been demonstrated by the comments that, of people who've come to council. And so it's never fun to look at additional revenue, but I think the fact that this revenue source has been tested, both in terms of going through the legal process in the courts and upheld at the state level, and then it was challenged an initiative, and I think it was a 60% vote to retain it, indicates to me that this is a solid, it's a solid form of additional revenue and that it has broad public support. And I'm hoping that my amendment to increase rental assistance by 3.3 million will pass. But even if that does pass, we are, again, in additional need for more rental assistance. I recognize that this is a volatile tax, so is payroll expense tax, and yet we are looking at using that as a significant source of revenue for our city now and going forward. Most of these taxes are volatile. We do not have the opportunity to pursue an income tax. That, the state legislature made that decision as one of the initiatives that they adopted. And so we are really somewhat hamstrung in which, where we can look for sustainable revenue. One of the reasons that, so the reason I, I think I've explained why I chose the designated categories, but I did not set a percentage. And that, one of the reasons I did not set a percentage is because of the fact that we don't know what the, the income is going to generate each year. And so my, my thinking is that we get the money, we see how much we have, and then we use our discretion as we are elected to do with input from stakeholders and the community about what is the most pressing need and how do we distribute the money. And so that, that is an ongoing budgeting decision, and it gives us the flexibility that we need to address issues as they arise. So those are just sort of my basic points about this. And the other reason that I'm bringing it now is that it is a lengthy process. So we, it would take a year to track, a year to collect. There is a possibility of legal challenge. I, I want to acknowledge that. And then it would only, we would only be in a position to begin to allocate, allocate in 2027. And so we are looking at a significant deficit in 2027. So I wanted to get the ball rolling to at least provide us an additional revenue source at that point rather than continuing to have additional discussion and wait longer before we started it. So that is my thinking behind bringing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Council President, did you still want, I see your hand's not there, but I figured I'd ask.
It bugs me just to watch it in, on the screen. I do have a question about the presentation, just a clarification.
Please.
I think that you were saying that, I think I heard you say that the first year anticipated revenue from the state's income, capital gains tax was X amount and the following year was quite a bit less. Is that what you said or was? Okay.
I would, Council President, I would, I would say that it wasn't the first year of expected revenue from the tax. It was actually the first actual collections from the tax were $870 million. In fact, the state expected less than that amount in the first year and then were surprised to the upside. And then in the second year, it came in at $370 million.
Wow. So from 800 to 300 something. So, and what were the reasons for that drop?
I, I don't, I don't know the, the specific reasons other than, I mean, one of the possible rationales is that the, I'm waiting for the results of the, the ballot initiative. However, it could just be response to the tax. It's unclear. But the, the number of taxpayers was roughly the same, one, one data point that was provided by the Forecast Office. So it was about 3,000, 3,600 taxpayers in total. And the second year was about the same. So it could just be the, the total value of the asset sales as, as different.
So the economic activity changed by the taxpayers, not necessarily, they didn't move out of Washington is what you're saying?
Right.
The concentration at the state level was also, if you will, extreme. So a relatively large share of statewide revenues were paid from a relatively few number of individuals. So that's, just those individuals making different financial decisions with regard to their own finances could have that kind of an impact. I mean, I forget the exact data, but like the top 10 payers were responsible for 25% statewide. It's just like, excuse us, mind boggling at some level. But anyway, those individual decisions could drive literally tens of millions of dollars in revenue in terms of its impact. And that, that's highlighted in our, the comments here about, about that, just if you will, natural volatility.
Thank you. And one follow-up. Last year, we, we entertained, or we, we talked about establishing a capital gains tax to offset the removal of the utility tax. And I believe that that was about 32 million. Is that correct? Do you remember what percentage that was?
I do recall that the number was in the 30, 30 million dollar range. I think it was about $30 million, so it was estimated last year at that time. But we hadn't, didn't have the, the results from the 2023 collections at that time either.
But it was 2%, right?
It was 2%.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council President, anything further?
Yep.
You're good? Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. Tom, you might not have an exact answer to this, but I am curious if we do something like this, given the fluctuation and not, not having a good sense of what might be coming in from year to year, how we might anticipate what that means for programming of the dollars? Because I appreciate that the idea here is to make sure that it is going into housing. But what does it mean for us in terms of programming expectations?
Right. Thanks for the question, Councilmember Morales. So that is the part two, how to, how to deal with the, how to deal with the risk. So we will get two more data points in terms of collections from the state's tax. So 20, so 2025 revenues and 2026 revenues will come in to see what the trends are, to analyze how much of that is coming from Seattle addresses to give us, to give a better sense than we have now, because right now we have basically two data points. So we'll get a few more data points. And then also, assuming that there is still a range provided from the Forecast Office, budgeting to the lower end of the range would be the safer move to do, or even pause a year, apply the tax in the first year and then kind of budget the, budget the money you've collected as opposed to budgeting based on a forecast.
You got it. Okay.
You can do a hybrid. You could budget to the low, low end and then, and when you got the receipts, you know, come April, May, make a mid-year appropriation potentially to the difference. But it would imply that you're sort of at some level waiting to see what you get before you make the commitments about spending it.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I will say, I'm, I am excited to be co-sponsoring this with Councilmember Moore and really appreciate that we are beginning the conversation about how we're going to fix this structural budget deficit. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Colleagues, anything further at this time? And we are going to be bringing this up for a vote on the 19th, correct?
Correct.
With an, with an amendment deadline on this Friday.
Correct.
Great. And Director Noble, if you could pull your microphone closer to you.
Happy to do that.
I've had too many concerts and chainsaws in my life. Councilmember Moore, anything to close us out?
Thank you. Excuse me. Yeah, I just, I mean, I, I do want to acknowledge that it's, it's not perfect by any means and there's a lot of unknowns. But again, I think it, and it's intended to be supplemental because of the fact that we don't have all the data points. And that's also part of the reason that I've limited it to those three areas to really supplement the, the funding in the current city budget. And it certainly would be my intent to budget based on receipts, not on proposed, expected revenue, given the fact that we need more time to see how it's going to perform. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Saka, that was the last word. I'm going to turn it back over to you, but usually I'll let the sponsor have the last word. Back to you, Councilmember Saka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I also note that there is one more slide, on slide 12, on this topic. So at your discretion, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to go after, after that, but I do want to share some thoughts on, on, on this topic. I'll defer to you on that. But I do want to share some thoughts on, on this topic. I'll defer to you on that.
That's the next ordinance. So I'll hold your comments until the next ordinance. Okay. Tom, back to you.
Thank you, Chair Strauss. So we've, the conversation has sort of already gone into the implications of the second ordinance. So this is basically the, the council bill 120909 is the allocation of the, of the proceeds from the capital gains tax, size tax. So they're, they're separate bills because of the single sub, so bills need to reference a single subject. So the 120908 applies the tax, 12909 earmarks those revenues. And what it does is that earmarks those revenues, I'm kind of building off what Councilmember Moore was saying, towards rental assistance to rent burdened households, down payment assistance to households, and food assistance to food insecure households. And then it further indicates council's intent to do a process to either put in place a resolution that puts more finer tuned allocations, or to make those allocations in the budget process. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore, I think, anything further? Councilmember Saka, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to clarify a few things, namely that there are a number of items that I, in amendments, that I co-sponsored as part of this budget, that I co-sponsored for purposes of elevating the discussion, even though I know I'm not going to ultimately support it this year. And for purposes of, again, elevating the discussion, comedy, we all deserve to have our various issues heard and just thoughtfully discussed within reason. We can't, we need to streamline as much as possible. We can't vote on 130-plus individual things. But there are a handful, all that is to say, there are a handful of items that I, I agree to co-sponsor, even though I know I'm not going to ultimately vote to support. And this is definitely one of them. Although, this is probably the one that I'm, I feel the most sangwin about overall. There's too much that needs to be worked out this year. But two, two comments pertaining to this, this capital gains tax idea more broadly. One is, I think it is the right idea at the wrong time. Some in our city would argue that we have a revenue problem. Others would say, no, no, we actually have a spending problem. And I happen to find elements of both of those arguments compelling. And I personally feel I was elected to specifically reject the false choice narrative and framing, and clap back against the either or divisive kind of rhetoric, and champion what Mayor Harrell calls the politics of A and D. And so again, I think both are actually true. But regardless of where you fit on the spectrum, whether you think we have a, a, a spending problem, or a revenue problem, I think it is more crystal clear, there's much more consensus, that in Seattle, in particular, we have an outcomes problem. In Seattle, we have a results problem. And so unless and until we're able to better get a hold of that, and start producing better results, I don't think it's appropriate for us to go back and start looking at new revenue options. I heard personally, over and over on the campaign trail, that people don't mind paying their fair share, for whatever it is. Even some of the wealthiest individuals said that to me, to my face. 16,000 doors I knocked on personally. Heard it over and over again. But people do have a strong problem with doing that if they're not seeing any return on investment for their existing tax dollars. So I think we need to better position ourselves as a city to crush these everyday basics of local government, public safety, parks, potholes, infrastructure. It's not an exhaustive list. Libraries, amongst other things. And once we start yielding better results on those things, then I think it would be appropriate to look at other revenue options, especially progressive revenue, and that impact the wealthiest of individuals. And this is a clear, concrete example of what is actually doable in terms of options. And looking at the, the election results from last week, you know, I note that the initiative 2109 at the state level was overwhelmingly rejected in the, just in the city of Seattle, in near, in virtually all precincts, but a handful. And in my own district, District 1, it was unanimously rejected. And so I think this is a revenue idea that people would generally support. But I also think there's, we need to do more work to figure out how to best bring it to life. So that's point number one. And less and until, and let's revisit this every year periodically. Let's revisit this, because I don't think it makes sense this year until, again, we can get a better hand of, of producing better results. But let's continue to revisit on an ongoing basis. And the second thing I would like to note is that I appreciate the work of Councilmember Moore, and thank you, Councilmember Moore, for your leadership in championing this to begin with, and bringing this forward, and so we can have this conversation now. I, I would probably have slightly different spending allocations or designated categories of authorized spending for this. I don't necessarily, neither agree nor disagree with any of the things included in this suggestion. But as someone who strongly supports infrastructure, getting hammers in hands, shovels in grounds, knowing the impacts of our, of the anticipated growth we can expect to see in our city, and the correlated strain that has on our, on our already decrepit and aging infrastructure, and the fact that people expect local government, in particular, to look after and heavily invest in infrastructure. I can't in good faith support a new revenue option that does not include some sort of infrastructure, generic infrastructure investment, whether that's infrastructure modernization, something to, to better address and, and help us get a hold of, and arrest the deteriorating infrastructure situation. Because we, as we know, the levy that just passed, there's a financial task force that's going to be stood up pursuant to that. And wouldn't be surprised if one of the recommendations at the, at the principal, at the high level, would be every new revenue option you get, like, you should allocate a certain proportion of that for new, for infrastructure upgrades. So, so I, I think, you know, we need to have a more thoughtful analysis of like, what are the appropriate categories of spending? But again, right idea, wrong time. And, and, but I do want to thank Councilmember Moore for her leadership in, in championing this, and honor to co-sponsor it along with Councilmember Morales. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Saka, Councilmember Wu, followed by Vice Chair Rivera.
So I know there are a lot of rental assistance, tenant assistance, that are amendments that are coming up. So I just want to make a general comment about rental assistance, tenant assistance. You know, we, we always talk about putting more money, giving more money to help people with rent. But let's think about the root cause and of why people need assistance. And it's different for every single person. And so I would love to see more priorities given to possibly having social workers inside buildings, or resident advisors inside these buildings to help people get to the root cause, and try to give people resources on why they get to the point where they will need rental assistance, where they get to the point where they may have to face eviction, and try to help get to the root cause, and try to get them the appropriate resources. Because when it comes to rental assistance, it's very, I guess it's, it doesn't really address certain issues. So I think when we talk about more money for tenant assistance, rental assistance, for helping people who are facing eviction, I think that we need to look at possibly funding, how do we get down to the root cause of why they have gotten to that point? And it's different for every single person. It's the same thing of why people are unhoused. It's different for every single person. And just giving them, I believe, you know, payment assistance without really addressing the resources they actually need could be, in a way, not, you know, as solving the entire, the reason why they got to that point. And so I was hoping we could, you know, think about this when we look at our different amendments of, is this really tackling the root cause of the situation?
Thank you, Councilmember Wu. Council, Vice Chair Rivera, then Councilmember, Councilmember Moore will have the last word. So if anyone else has anything to say, now's the time to raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. First, I just want to thank central staff in general, and my voice to yours, Chair, on the hard work that they've done during this budget process. And so I wanted to take, this was the first chance I could take to really thank Ben and Yolanda and their staff for the hard work the last, you know, couple weeks, especially the last week with the amendment scramble. So really appreciate the long hours that have gone into this. That said, I wanted to bring up a couple points related to this particular topic, which is that I appreciate that we, and you will see in this budget, a number of slides, because we're just getting to the, the information gathering by which to make future decisions stage. It takes time to gather that information. And as a legislative body, we don't control the departments. And so it's through the budget process and through, that we're really able to compel departments to give us information on the work that they're doing. And so we've really started to, in my opinion, dig into these programs now. And a lot of us have put in slides by which, like I said earlier, we are getting information and data by which we are making informed decisions. And, you know, as to this particular, you know, I appreciate and thank my colleague, Councilmember Moore, for her thoughtfulness and her passion around these issues. I, however, think that we haven't done our homework by which we're able to make a decision of this nature. I will say, I'm not morally opposed. However, we are far from really being able to bring a, a proposal that is really seeped in the data. There are a lot of things in our budget and at the city that we fund. There are a lot of things that we really care about, and that our constituents really care about. There's a lot of need out there. You know, we had a couple hundred people yesterday come to chambers yesterday, talk about their particular interests. That's 200 people out of 750,000 people. I have not seen any data points to demonstrate the needs, which, you know, that doesn't mean I'm not, I very much appreciate that the folks that come down here to express their, their needs have those needs, of course. And I'm very compelled by that. And I also now know that there are other folks that are not able to come down here, for whatever reason, who also have needs that we need to be able to address. And that we don't know the level of those needs until we get these data points and information from departments. And I think that is really critical, and that is part of the homework that we have to be doing as a legislative body. And it is our responsibility to do so. It is part of the accountability piece to our constituents, that we do that work before then we engage in this kind of exercise. And so I appreciate my colleague, Councilmember Saka's observations and points about, you know, Seattleites don't have the information regarding outcomes and results. We do have an outcome and results problem. I've been saying that since I got here in January, and it's something that I've committed to my constituents to really continue to look into and dig into. And I don't feel we're there yet. We don't have that information by which to make a lot of decisions, I will say, not just this decision, many other decisions. I'll be very transparent about that. But as I said earlier, we are using this budget process to put in our slides requesting the information. So when we're making decisions in the future, it is actually based on real data and information about the things that we've decided to fund as a body and as a city. And so for me, in terms of the accountability pieces, we're just not there with the information. I appreciate that this body, and I very much appreciate working with you all together as part of this particular budget process to request that information. And I look forward to next year's budget, by which hopefully, we have better, a better understanding and better information, by which we can make better decisions about city budgeting, and what the needs are in community, and see from the actual data what the needs are, and how to better manage the money that we actually spend on these programs. Because, you know, I am very supportive of, we've all said affordability, housing affordability, the importance of, you know, rental assistance and food security. And yet, we're spending all this money, and I don't actually, we don't, none of us can actually say how this money is being spent, and what the actual continual, continued need is. Where, how much are we falling short? I have no idea. And if you all know, please do share that with me. But I have not seen what the actual numbers need is when we talk about all of these things. And I think that is really critical to this conversation. So really look forward to the continued conversation moving forward as part of this and many decisions that we'll have to make in the time that we're here. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Moore, we have Councilmember Hollingsworth with her hand up. Is it all right? She goes first, and then you'll have last word. Councilmember Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to thank Councilmember Moore and co-sponsors Morales and Saka for bringing this to the table for us to talk about. Just knowing Seattle, we've always been a giving city and wanting to, wanting to, you know, have an impact and for outcomes. And so I just want to thank you all for bringing this to the conversation for us just to discuss as a council, because I think it's incredibly important for us to have this conversation. So I just wanted to publicly, publicly say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore, last word.
Thank you. So I did want to take the opportunity to thank both Councilmember Morales for her cosponsorship, and Councilmember Saka for your cosponsorship, and recognizing that this was an opportunity to get it before us. And I appreciate your being willing to do that. Again, I think we, we clearly have respectful differences of opinion. I guess in terms of, true, I, I share Councilmember Rivera's concern that we don't have enough information. And I think we are attempting to get that information. And I do also share the concerns voiced by my colleagues that, you know, we have a results, outcomes problem. And we do. And we do need to do a better job of creating clear, objective metrics to measure performance. But all of that said, we still have unmet need in the city, and we're going to continue to have unmet need in the city. And I think this is a time when we can begin collecting the funds, that we can then have an intelligent discussion about where should it go. So this is just really to start that process. And, and to the point about root causes, yeah, absolutely, we need to address the root causes. And I certainly support having more resident services in buildings, particularly in our affordable housing buildings, permanent supportive housing. We need quite, we really do need to beef up those services. But the other thing that I want to point out here is that statistics are quite compelling. 50% of Seattle residents are renters. 44% of households in Seattle are cost burdened. That means that people are spending 30% of their income on their rent and utilities. And 30% is the, the cutoff at which people are, you know, that's the amount people should are considered reasonable for them to be able to, to manage. But then I would note that 19% of households in Seattle are severely cost burdened. They're paying 50% or more in rent and utilities. Then you look at, you know, our MFTE program, where people get a lower rent at 60% and below. 85% of those households are cost burdened, and 25% are severely cost burdened. That means 25% in a reduced income subsidized housing are still paying 50% of their rent and utilities. And this is in a city with one of the highest minimum wages in the country, if not, I don't know how we compare to San Francisco. Anyway. So one of the root causes is that people's income is not keeping up with the cost of living. It's not keeping up with rent. It's not keeping up with food, utilities. We live in a very expensive We live in a very expensive city. And we live in a city in which the income inequality is continuing to grow at a rapid pace. And with our national election, we're going to see that accelerate exponentially. So yes, there are root causes of poverty. There are root causes of mental illness. There are root causes of addiction. There's also a root cause of economic inability to keep up. And we have an obligation in this city to help keep people keep up. And we have an obligation to not continue to create a city where everybody's unstable. You know, the focus in our housing levy and in our Office of Housing is building more rental units, and that's great. But we also need to put a lot more money in building homeownership opportunities. We need to rebuild a middle class in this city. And we are not putting enough money. And I agree, we don't know where it's all going. And there's a pipeline issue, and we need to work on that. But we also, as a city, need to have a vision and make a commitment. And in my opinion, that's going to be even more important as we go forward with the national results. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. And a quick Google search shows San Francisco standard reporting that Seattle is the only city with a higher minimum wage than San Francisco, but I have not completed my research. It has just been since you made that comment.
Thank you.
Moving on, if we want to move on to Seattle Channel funding sponsored by Council President Nelson.
Okay, good morning, Councilmembers. Brian Goodnight, Council Central Staff. So Council Bill 120911, which, as you said, is sponsored by Council President Nelson and cosponsored by Councilmembers Kettle and Rivera. Response to an issue that was discussed in previous Budget Committee meetings for the Seattle Channel, and that's declining revenues from cable franchise fees. So cable franchise fees have been declining for a number of years and are predicted to continue to decline as customers move away from traditional cable service towards streaming services. So this bill states the council's intent to establish a dedicated and ongoing funding plan sufficient to meet the operating and capital needs of the Seattle Channel, such that they can continue to provide the governmental programming and also the types of civic, cultural, and community programming that they currently produce. The bill specifies that, when established, the funding plan should include, but not be limited to, the following sources. So the first is at least 50%, but no less than $1.7 million of cable franchise fee revenues in each year should be dedicated to the Seattle Channel. The second is that Seattle Information Technology Department should incorporate a portion of Seattle Channel's expenses into its cost allocation model, so that expenditures that are in support of the services and priorities of other city departments are appropriately allocated to those departments. And then the third category is the General Fund. And the General Fund should be used exclusively, or should be used exclusively, for the coverage of meetings, press conferences, and other public events of the City Council and other City of Seattle elected officials. The bill requests that the executive present a funding plan consistent with the elements in the bill, along with any legislation necessary to implement the plan, to the council by September 3rd of next year, 2025. And then lastly, the bill states the council's expectation that, in creating the funding plan, the executive will utilize the research and recommendations of any advisory workgroups that are established to study the Seattle Channel's operations and financing. And this reference is to advisory workgroups is in recognition of a statement of legislative intent that's included in Group C, and that will be discussed later today.
Thank you, Mr. Goodnight, Council President, as sponsor of the legislation. Over to you.
Thank you very much. And first, I would like to thank you, Chair, for including bridge funding in the, in your balancing package through 2026. I know that probably every single one of us was really interested in ensuring that Seattle Channel was funded enough to continue its programming through this year and into next. So as noted already, this legislation does direct the executive to establish an ongoing and sustainable funding plan. And the legislation also identifies possible funding sources that include, but are not necessarily limited to, 50% of the existing cable fund revenues. And I put this in here because it's, because the percentage of cable fund revenues has been declining over the years as more demands have been made on the fund as a whole. And the resolution that was passed in 2001 does indicate that paying for Seattle Channel was the first priority after some of the administrative and obligatory things that the cable fund had to pay for. So this is, that's a marker for, yes, we are still considering the Seattle Channel as a major recipient of the cable fund revenues. The second is a cost allocation to departments, as already said. And the third would be general fund revenues. That would be dedicated exclusively for paying for the production costs of our council meetings on the, so what is, you know, all the hard work that Seattle Channel is doing right now, and also for press conferences and other public meetings. Why? Because we are obligated to have public meetings. And so therefore, the thinking is that nobody would ever try, no future politician would try to go after that slice of funding and cripple the future of the Seattle Channel. As noted, this legislation does anticipate passage of Chair Strauss's slide that will convene a work group that will make recommendations on long-term funding. I completely welcome that. I am told that one of the, so, not to get into the weeds, but I, it's important that the Seattle Channel be represented on that work group, and I have no reason to doubt that that won't be the case. Ultimately, what's necessary, colleagues, is certainty, is certainty. We don't want to lose the talent or the employees that produce and make possible the award-winning programming and absolutely critical public service that is the Seattle Channel right now. And so that is why I was motivated to put forward legislation that pretty much sets a date for the establishment of a funding plan that could be implemented in 2016, or 2026, so that there is no question going forward that we'll be talking about this again in the next biennium. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, colleagues. There are no other comments. I'll share my comments and then pass it back to you for last word, Council President. Just really appreciate your work on this. You heard everyone on this dais express their support for continuing the Seattle Channel's funding and making sure that they remain a strong entity within the City of Seattle. I really appreciate the unanimous support across the dais. Thank you, colleagues. And what you noted is that we have to make sure that their funding source is independent from elected official influence with considering the cable franchise tax reductions at such a rapid rate at this point. And the fact that we need to make sure that everyone watching downstairs knows that we've got their back no matter what, until we can find a bigger, broader way to make sure to support and hopefully expand their abilities. This is a good bill. So thank you, Council President. And do you want to find a word?
Just I want to, I want to thank Brian very much for throwing your, all your effort into this in the last minute. So thank you very much, and thank you to my colleagues for your support, hopefully.
Thank you. I think we'll move on to the next item.
And the next item is another new piece of legislation, one that would establish new payroll expense policies. So about a month ago, I was here during the policy considerations phase, giving you a brief summary of the executives' proposed changes to the Jump Start, I'm going to use the phrase Jump Start PET, I think, but I may slip back and forth, policies. And as part of that, I sort of wound up that presentation with a series of questions about, that I thought were going to be essential for you collectively to answer. As you said, either adopted, the executives' policies are set ones of your own. And what I'm here today to do is to describe the proposals from the Chair regarding those policies and essentially answering those questions. So I'm going to first take a couple of slides to provide a summary of the Chair's proposal. This is legislation that was referred to this committee yesterday. I'm then going to highlight a couple of amendments that are being proposed by Councilmembers Moore, actually, total of three amendments, Councilmembers Moore and Morales. They've already engaged Central Staff, me in particular, on those amendments. If you, if others are interested, the deadline is, again, this Friday, and the calendar has you collectively voting on the legislation and considering any amendments on next Tuesday, on the 19th. So with that background, so the legislation proposed by Chair Strauss begins with the executives as a base, but makes a number of significant and important changes. So first of all, like the executives, it establishes a set of spending categories. Those include what I would describe as the original five Jump Start categories: Administration, Affordable Housing, Economic, excuse me, Equitable Development Initiative, Economic Development and Reutilization, and the Green New Deal. There was then the additional priority that was added as part of last year's budget process, Youth Mental Health and Violence Prevention. And I'm using that title to describe that body of services. It then, this legislation would then add General Fund, so transfers to the General Fund as an eligible use, and then also add contributions to a revenue stabilization account. This legislation formalizes a revenue stabilization account for the payroll expense tax. That is distinct from the executive, which had proposed a reserve but not set up specific policies or proposed specific policies about how it would be established and governed. Again, it's not a hostile amendment. I suspect for the executives, I think that, per their actions, they appreciated the value of a revenue stabilization account here. And I'll remind you that it's the volatility of this revenue source is one of the reasons why such an account would make a fair amount of sense. So I'll explain this further, but there are no restrictions put on the allocations among these categories. So it is flexible in that way. So it allows you this year and next year and going forward to establish what the allocation is between these spending categories, maybe most specifically between the General Fund support and then the other original priorities. I would add, with respect to one of the priorities, Youth Mental Health and Violence Prevention, the executive's proposal had identified those as eligible uses for the next two years, for '25 and '26, but not beyond, with the implied intent to provide funding for those through the renewal of the Families and Education Levy, which now has a longer title, but I'm going to forget it. But this legislation deals with that issue slightly differently, and that's what that footnote is, and it's an important footnote. It's, it would, it would maintain Youth Mental Health and Violence Prevention as an eligible use until a sustainable alternative funding source is provided for those, for those items. That funding source could be the levy, but it could be something else. So, but it does, it's explicit about that, which again, just a notable difference. In terms of percentage allocations, the legislation sets out as guidelines, but not constraints, the original percentage targets that were in the Jump Start legislation. So you can see the percentages set out. I purposely set this table up so that it only covers the five and it has three blanks, because the way these percentages work is they say, of the money allocated for those five categories, this is how it's divided. They don't say how much money of the, what share of the total PET revenues have to go to this combined set of things. That flexibility remains. So, but of the money allocated to these five items, these percentages are set as guidelines. So the intent here is to preserve the relative priorities established in the original Jump Start legislation, but again, to provide the flexibility about the total amount of funding that is provided either to the General Fund or to these priorities. So those are, again, guidelines, but not binding constraints. Next line, yeah. As I described just moments ago, but now in more detail, it does establish a former revenue, excuse me, a formal revenue stabilization account, an RSA, if you will, within the Jump Start Fund. And in particular, it targets the balance for that reserve at 10% of forecast revenues. That's now in the range of $450 million, so I think sort of $45 to $50 million. It establishes that that target should be reached within four years. As part of the current proposed balancing package, some of the reserve proposed by the executive is being allocated to other things. So this sets a target so that that balance gets rebuilt. That four-year timeframe is consistent with the timeframe for the revolution, the RSA for the General Fund. And similarly to the General Fund RSA, the policies, proposed policies establish what I'm going to describe as an automatic mechanism to help make contributions to that, to the revenue stabilization account. And in particular, at the end of the year, we would look at the fund balance in the, in the account and compare that to the projected fund balance. As we budget from year to year, there is reason why you might have a projected fund balance, a purposeful fund balance, for instance, in the first year of a biennium, because you expect to spend some of the money in the first year, but not all of it. So there was, there will have, there will have been some projected fund balance. If the fund balance ends up above that level, and it could end up above that level for two fundamental reasons. One is that revenues came in higher than the forecast, and the other is that expenditures didn't reach the level that had been anticipated. So you take the difference of those things, and half of that difference is automatically transferred to the revenue stabilization account. The other half is then available to address some immediate needs, whatever those might be, or alternatively, to increase the contribution to the stabilization account. You'd have flexibility about, about the other half, if you will. And then a technical note, in comparing the actual and the forecast fund balance, we would take account for carryforward, so that there are some allocations that might have not gotten spent in the previous year, but there was every anticipation that they would have, and that you'll, the goal will be to carry forward those revenues. So we'll take account for that. In particular, if you made an allocation for some capital purpose that didn't quite get executed in that year, it would be natural to carry that forward as part of the fund balance. Really, a technical point. Then withdrawals, they're, their criteria set for when you could turn to the Jump Start Revenue Stabilization Account. And I would describe them in sort of mechanically or practically in two ways. One is if the, between the time the mayor submitted his budget and you took final action on it, the forecast for those revenues dropped. The opposite thing had happened this year, but it could easily happen that the forecast that was prepared in August versus the one in, prepared in October shows a decline in revenues. That would be a sort of a last-minute change. You might not be in a situation to make difficult choices about cutting appropriations, so it could make sense to lean on the revenue, excuse me, the revenue stabilization account. That would be, that's one of the, one of the times you could do it. The other is, after you adopt the budget, so budget gets adopted, you know, as you say, a week from now, and then come April, there's a revenue forecast update that reduces the amount of revenue that's anticipated for the then-current year, so for 2025, for instance. At that point, your budget is essentially out of balance. You were balanced against the revenue forecast. That revenue forecast has come down. You, you have two choices at that point. You can, well, the executive, you can reduce expenditures. Either the executive does that administratively, or you reduce appropriations, or you could turn to the revenue stabilization account. And so that's what's imagined there. So that's the RSA. Moving on to the other elements of the legislation, consistent with the executive's proposal, the legislation before you now eliminates the Jump Start Oversight Committee. That committee had been established as a nine-member body that was created to provide oversight of Jump Start spending and also to assess the taxes impact on the local economy. Council appointed five members of that body a year ago. The executive has not made nominations, and to date, the committee hasn't met. So, and then the last element is, and another significant one, is that it removes the sunset date. So currently, the payroll expense tax sunsets at the end of 2040. And this legislation would eliminate that sunset and establish this, like most of the other cities' taxes, as an ongoing affair, if you will. So I think probably worth a stop to answer questions about that before to move on to talk about the amendments.
Thank you, Director. And even though I stepped out for just a second, I could hear every word you said. And so, yes, let's pause here, look at this in total, and then move on to the next two, the next slide with two policy proposals. I'll just, not a correction for the record, but maybe a clarification for the record. The removal of the Jump Start Oversight Committee was not a change made at council that was in the base bill transmitted.
Yeah, meant to say that, so correct.
Thank you. Colleagues, I am going, as sponsor of this legislation, I'm going to speak to it, and then we will take questions, comments. And I see Council President already has her hand up. So I'm going to start in the wayback and current time machine. Council President, if you could leave your hand up.
Okay.
Yep, just leave it up, otherwise I'm going to lose you. When the last set of Jump Start policies were voted on, and that's the bill that's on the books to, the ordinance on the legislation today, we at council believed that today, setting up for 2025, we would be past the downstream economic impacts of the pandemic. And so we had hoped. This is part of why the question about the Jump Start uses are, this question's being called in this budget cycle. called in this budget cycle. I really wish that we had been correct, that in 2025, we would be past the downstream economic issues. The reality is that the downturn forecast mid-budget has only been experienced in 2008 and 2020, and we are not out of the woods yet. We still need our parachute for this budget so that we do not unnecessarily cut staff or programming, so that we do not engage in all-out austerity budgeting. Even with this parachute, we are cutting staff and programming, which are incredibly difficult decisions. Due to Central Staff's really good work this year, we found existing funding for council's priorities without using the Jump Start Reserve Fund, until the downturn forecast, which is why we had to use the majority of the reserve funds seed funding. Again, the reserve account did not exist 90 days ago, and it's a really good idea. What this experience taught me is the importance of how Jump Start ensures we do not engage in austerity budgeting. We used Jump Start funding to increase access to food, to fund tenant services, legal assistance to youth, tax return services for Seattleites who can't afford it, additional homeownership opportunities serving homeless youth, and so much more. That's what Jump Start is being used to fund this year. What I know today is that the last time we had legislation before us, we thought we would be out of the woods, and in fact, we are in the eye of the storm. We are still experiencing the downstream economic impacts of the pandemic, and at the same time, COVID relief funds are expiring, meaning that the buoy we used to allow Jump Start to fund our four priorities is no longer available to us. We need flexibility to get us through this moment, and we need to ensure that the original priorities are funded once we are past this economic downturn we're in. We will likely need budget flexibility to be responsive to the moment over the course of the next four years. Eight years ago, so now not Jump Start, but eight years ago, if you can track with me, we began funding important priorities to serve Seattleites under the last presidential administration. I foresee us having to do the same thing again, increasing funding for Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, Office of Civil Rights, backfilling for changing federal funding priorities. If you remember the Grants and Acceptance Ordinance, we have received a lot of federal funding over the last four years, because there's been, the Infrastructure Act, the Climate Act, I mean, we've got, we, if you look on I-5 right now, we've got, here in Seattle, we've got more federal funds coming in there. We're not going to have a lot of that funding moving forward. We will also need to be funding locally, local community-based organizations to meet the needs of Seattleites and many priorities we don't yet know about for the next four years. I say this because while we don't know what our future holds, I do know that every one of us up here will want to be nimble and responsive to serving Seattleites through uncertain times. The point there is that's why we need flexibility for the next four years. Let's walk through what I'm proposing. Director Noble did a very good job of giving a presentation on here, and I want to speak about why the comprehensive review, why I requested and required a comprehensive review in four years with a checkpoint in two years. And this goes back to the experience that we have had with Jump Start, that it has, our needs for the general fund have changed as we get out of this economic recession, downstream impacts. What I did not know a few years ago was that we would still be in it in 2025. I thought we would be out of the woods. So that's why I don't want to put strict parameters on the next biennium, because I don't know that we'll be out of the woods, and I don't know what more we need to be responsive to for these next two years, where the federal government no longer participates. And I know that in four years, we have to have a comprehensive analysis and review about these policies. The next thing that this does is it does, while the original four priority, five, if you count Administration, was included, we've included this with the original percentages to be allocated of Jump Start funding to these categories. This is what Mayor Harold did this year, and then through the Chair's package, using the Jump Start Reserve Funds, the things like funding rental assistance and homeownership opportunities, those are within the original four categories, but they were not necessarily consistent with the percentages. I have not included a hard number for Jump Start being used for priorities or the amount of general fund to be used this year, because the number of variables that are uncertain today on November 13th is higher than the number of variables with uncertainty in September. Said another way, we are in a more uncertain place today than we were three months ago. And that's why I don't think that adding hard numbers today is prudent. I do think that that is absolutely something that we should do, which is why I've requested the two- and four-year check-ins. We have included mental health as a use until a more stable funding source is implemented, not just identified. It can't just be passed. There cannot be a gap in addressing youth mental health. And so that is why it is allowed use until a more stable funding source is implemented. The note in adding clarity that within the ordinance, that if Jump Start revenue decreases and other sources of revenue supporting general fund are not reduced, the general fund should be used to fund our Jump Start priorities. During our select budget series, or it's, one, I mean, I can't remember, we have had so many presentations about this, but I just recall, if you, colleagues, remember how much we were funding for Equitable Development Initiative before Jump Start, it was not very much. It was just from sweetened beverage tax. If you remember Office of Economic Development, they did not have a large budget as compared to what they have today. I remember Bobby Lee, a former director of OED, saying that we should put a 1% on all contracts to fund OED, and I think at that time, Director Noble of the Budget Office kicked him under the table. But, you know, I mean, and the reason that Bobby brought that up was because there was not a dedicated source of funding to support our smallest businesses, and that is what Jump Start does. Green New Deal was a priority clearly in 2018, 2019. That term, you don't hear so much anymore, because it is generally that the climate crisis is real and it's in our face. We need to look no further than South Park with the flooding that has been occurring with the King tides, et cetera. And housing. We do have more support for housing since Jump Start was passed, and we are still decades behind in production. I speak about this because this simply notes that Jump Start is not a stable funding source, and the priorities I originally identified remain incredibly important for us to fund if we want a strong and healthy Seattle. Moving on to the reserve account, I think it's pretty straightforward. The mayor's office did, this was a very smart decision by the mayor's office, because, again, this is not a stable funding source. Creating a reserve account, I spoke to the use of the reserve account this year. It had been my intent before the revenue forecast to retain that reserve account, and it did its job this year. Said another way, if the $33 million had been programmed rather than held in an account, we would have had really hard cost-benefit choices to make to use that funding. And so I just, I greatly appreciate the ability to have that fund. It's very smart. And as Director Noble mentioned, using the rainy day fund and the emergency fund as guides, we created a policy for automatically refilling the reserve, as well as how we are to use those reserve dollars. Lastly, I'll talk about removing the sunset. My goal is that Jump Start funds are used as a parachute for the general fund for a limited amount of time, with the reality that Jump Start has been used in the general fund every year of its existence. Retaining a sunset in a funding source we rely so heavily on creates a structural deficit in 2040 on a scale we have not experienced. Colleagues, if we were to look at, if this tax sunsetted today, we would have a $430 million deficit in 2025, we would have a $452 million deficit in 2026, we would have a $460 million deficit in 2027. And for reference, this year, we had a $260 million structural deficit. So said another way, if we retain a sunset, we are setting ourself, our future selves up for a structural deficit on the scale of half a billion dollars. If in four years, the comprehensive review determines general fund should be an allowed use moving forward, the structural deficit becomes even more real, because the council members in four years, if they decide to continue using Jump Start for general fund, it absolutely is a source that the general fund is reliant on. And even if we're able, which makes the structural deficit even more real, and if we are able to actualize our goals of having a structurally sound budget without using Jump Start in the general fund, the sunset ends our investment in economic development and revitalization, the support for the smallest businesses like I just spoke about. It removes our investment, the majority source of funding for Equitable Development Initiative. It removes our funding source for addressing the climate crisis via Green New Deal. And again, it reduces our investment in housing. So if we are going to continue using Jump Start for general fund programs, again, legal assistance, tax prep, tenant services, homeownership, it is responsible governing for us to remove the sunset. If we continue using Jump Start funding for the general fund past four years from now, the sunset needs to be removed if we do not want to create a structural deficit larger than we have ever seen. With that, colleagues, I'm going to, I will call on Council President and then Council Member Rivera, and colleagues, if you have questions, comments, now is the time. We will move on after comments now to an overview of at least a few of the amendments that have been daylighted so far. Council President.
I had a question, but could you repeat your last sentence? It was poignant, and I didn't, I want to make sure I heard it.
If we continue using Jump Start funding for the general fund past four years from now, so in four years, I have stated we need to have a comprehensive review. Let me say it even more plainly. We need flexibility for the next four years. That's why the bill is written as it is. In four years from now, we need to have a comprehensive review, because I think that we, if we are out of the woods on the economic downturn, we should return to the original four priorities, plus mental health. But if we don't, and in four years from now, the choice is made that general fund is an acceptable use of Jump Start funding, the structural deficit created by the sunset in this bill creates a structural deficit larger than we've ever seen before.
Thank you for that. So I could be wrong, but my read, I like the idea of a revenue stabilization account or, yes, an RSA. We saw how fast that went. It's mine, the way I'm reading this, the proposed budget funded a PET reserve at 10% of the current PET forecast, and that's literally the explicit goal of the new policy, but within four years. So we saw how fast, four times the minimum amount put into the RSA went this year, so I think maybe some, I don't know how we will define what that can be spent on, but in general, I just wanted to say that I support transparency with, in how we spend this tax source or this revenue source, because up until now, there's always been a question about whether or not a proposed expenditure by a council member would count as close enough to what the Jump Start spending plan described. And so there was always that back and forth. That is why the, that is why the Oversight Board was, that was one of the functions of the Oversight Board, was to sort of negotiate, well, what is eligible for this fund? And I understand this, on page 15, it says, I am getting to my point, there was a nine-member committee that was created to provide oversight, perhaps to help council decide what counts as a Jump Start expenditure. That was never convened. I do think that it is important to, that we do need to have continual assessment of the Jump Start's impact on our local economy, and also as it plays, as it interplays with other policy decisions we may make. And what's most, but the thing that I appreciate about putting it together in Jump Start is simply, in the general fund, is simply this. We need to be able to compare the viability or the validity of expenditures against each other in an apples-to-apples manner. And with the expenditures of our general fund adjacent revenue sources is that they are kind of put aside, and they don't have to compete with other priorities. And so that is, I welcome that there is a melding of resources so that we can make decisions based on a better understanding of all the revenue that we might have for that purpose. Keeping in mind, however, that there are other restricted funds that we're not talking about, sweetened beverage, short-term rental, and transit. I want to note that one huge thing that I'm seeing missing as a priority, it might be covered under mental health, is treatment. And the, so treatment for addiction and a response to the opioid crisis, however you want to put it. As far as I can tell, the only new funding for addiction or treatment in this budget before us right now is $470,000 that I put in there to, and I didn't even put in new money, it was a redirection of opioid settlement dollars for a different purpose. And I do want to urge us that this is a, it's a root cause, everybody, and I would like to have that. As we go forward, please, everybody, remember that there is, that addiction, the drug crisis, et cetera, is inextricably linked to our homelessness crises and our public safety crises. And I urge folks to take that mindset into future budgets. That's all I have to say and pontificate.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rivera.
Thank you, Chair. So I have a couple of questions, Ben, on the revenue stabilization account, which I think is very prudent. Can you tell me, does this, is this a similar approach that's taken when we do the general fund rainy day account?
It is. It's not identical, but I pulled that piece up and use it as a model in crafting what's here.
It's based on a practice that we use, a prudent practice we use for...
I should say, the percentage here is somewhat higher because of volatility.
Correct.
We have actually seen a 10%, slightly larger than 10% drop from one year to another.
That makes sense, Ben. Thank you for confirming that. Also, I will say that I appreciate the fact that, I mean, it is a fact that since Jump Start was passed, we've, council has always had to use it for categories other than the ones that had been named originally. And I don't see, I agree with Chair, in the next four years, that changing. And I actually would say, I'm not sure beyond the four years, because it would really have to, we'd have to take a really very close look at the budget and start to cut things, I think, to make a difference. I just don't see a likely scenario where things are going to change to the general fund, where we're not going to be able, or not going to have to take some certain portion of this Jump Start tax to backfill. So I'm...
And just to clarify this point, and I probably should have included in the summary, as written, these policies could continue until they do not. As Chair Strauss has pointed out, there's very specific call-out of council's intent to check in on them in two years, when you pick up the next biennium, and then to comprehensively review them in four years. And I think, again, I think that's compatible with what you're both saying about, like, hope is that we are not, that we are in a better situation, but again, no guarantee that we will be.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Ben. And so I'm, yeah, I'm just reiterating that I don't even think, I mean, I think this is going to be a longer-term policy decision, and I do share the chair's and many of our colleagues, you know, it's really fortuitous that we had Jump Start, otherwise we'd be sitting here having to have cut many things in this budget. And we didn't have to do that because we had the reserves by which to backfill. And, you know, I very much appreciate the revenue stabilization account, because, you know, we need to, if something happens, we need to be able to have a reserve by which to utilize funds in a way almost like we did this. to utilize funds in a way almost like we did this year, but, you know, there could be, you know, COVID happened. I don't think COVID will happen again, but something like a COVID could happen. And we just need to be prudent. Yeah, we need to be prudent about the reserves, both for the general fund reserve and then creating this very deliberate revenue stabilization account. So very much appreciate the work that went into that and appreciate the mayor's office for sending it down like this and to the chair for including it, keeping it in his chair's package. And then can you, I have one last question, Chair, if that's okay? On the sunset date, what was anticipated when this was originally put in? Was it a review? I mean, we didn't get a lot of information about what went behind that thought. And let me just say, I don't, you know, sunset dates are, what I think they actually help with is really forcing bodies to take a hard look at that moment whenever that sunset is coming up, just to make decisions by, versus getting complacent about things, especially in this case of volatile tax. So I'm wondering what the thought process, though, was at the time.
I don't actually know the answer to that question.
Do you?
Yeah. There were, not to get in the wayback time machine of the fights that we have been in in the chambers, I can tell you that there were some people very excited about this tax and some people very upset about this tax. And a sunset was a nice middle ground. And then after that, the bill was vetoed, and then the veto was overturned, and then it was challenged in court, and then here we are today. And to your point, Vice Chair, really well said of, if we didn't have Jump Start this year, we would have had $460 million of cuts to make. Like, that was poignant, and I appreciate you making that point. But as well as it was in the original ideation of Jump Start, it was to get us through the pandemic and then to focus on these four priorities. What we have found is that we haven't gotten out of these downstream economic impacts from the pandemic yet. And two things there are true, is like, we don't have the COVID federal funds anymore. They expire this year. We were able to not lay off any city employees during the pandemic. No, like, very few other cities in this entire nation did that. And then we had to make those hard choices today, right? And through that process, we've created a habit of using Jump Start in the general fund, which is different. So again, like, the last points that I was making was like, if only those four categories are funded in 2040, we will have to cut all of those funding. If we use it for general fund, we're creating a structural deficit for us to face. Sorry, that was a really long answer.
Thank you, Chair. No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate a point you just made, which reminded me that when this fund was passed, it is true that my recollection from having been at the city then was that there were things added to the budget beyond those five categories. Because we had the federal funds, the Jump Start funds, we actually used Jump Start funds to either expand current things or add programs. And I think that also is really critical to mention because it bears why we also have this structural deficit that now we're looking to Jump Start to backfill, because we don't have those temporary federal relief funds anymore. So maybe if we had not, you know, used the federal relief funds to start new things or expand current things, then maybe we'd be in a position where we didn't have to take Jump Start to backfill. But I think it's important to be honest about that and transparent about that. So I wanted to call that out, and thank you for the reminder, Chair, because that's really critical. And I can think of some programs while I was here that got funding through those temporary federal funds. Ben was here too, so he knows his budget, he was CBO director at the time. So anyway, that's really important. Thank you. Thank you for answering my questions, Ben, and Chair for adding to it.
Thank you. And I thought I saw Councilmember Saka's hand up. You still want to speak, Councilmember?
No, I'm good.
We got a lot of time to talk about this, so we'll just keep moving on. Colleagues, any other questions, comments? Thank you. I'll just end by saying that, to clarify, the Jump Start funds will be deposited into the Jump Start account and then will be transferred into other BSLs, no matter if they're in the original four priorities or not. And that is a responsible governance practice to be able to track how the funding is used. Council President, you made a really good point about responding to the opioid epidemic, the fentanyl on our streets, because, and colleagues, just to put it in perspective, the fentanyl epidemic has skyrocketed in the four years since this tax was passed. So when this tax was originally passed, fentanyl was not the major drug being used on the street. It was heroin and meth at that time, and...
It's like a slow earthquake.
Please remember to be recognized. And all I, I'm just using this point to make the point that priorities change, and we have to be flexible and nimble. This is an example of that, and we don't know what's going to happen in the next four years. Lastly, I'll just read item C here, which is that allocations of the payroll expense tax proceeds to programs and services supported by the city's general fund shall be limited to the amount needed to sustain critical services and attend to emerging needs that cannot otherwise be sufficiently addressed within the general fund sources. This is in here to say that it cannot just be a carpe lanche use. It needs to really be a, an emergency release valve parachute, if you will. Those are all my comments. Remember, amendments are due Friday at noon. Back to you, Director Noble, for a couple of amendment ideas.
Exactly. Thank you. So there are three amendments that are under development and have been proposed. I think what I'll do is describe each of them and pause for potential comment and then wrap this up. So the first, the first two are from Councilmember Morales, and the first is quite simple. It would preserve the payroll, excuse me, the payroll tax oversight committee. As I described, when the tax was first authorized, there was a nine-person oversight committee called for, and this is a direct quote, "to provide oversight on the services and programs supported by the tax and to assess its impacts on the number of jobs and businesses in the city." As I pointed out, the council made an effort to appoint members fall of last year. The executive did not, and as to date, the committee has not yet met. So, but this would simply restore the language that calls for the committee to be appointed and to provide those services. And the next one...
Councilmember Morales.
Well, can we just do them together?
Yep. Sorry, I didn't want to, just wanted to give that. Second one, more significant, I would argue, so starting in 2027, so past this biennium, limit the amount of money transferred to the general fund to 20% of the total proceeds, and then allocate the remaining resources to, according to the percentages and the allocations that have been established previously. So on a financial side, this would increase funding for the Jump Start priorities by, again, I'm using the 2027 forecast numbers to do this math, by as much as 137 mil, excuse me, 136 million. So without this, under the current funding, let me take a step back here. The forecast for 2027 is for 483 million. The current general fund forecast anticipates a transfer of 233 million, so leaving, quick math, leaving 250 million for Jump Start priorities in 2027. Although I would note that that, the $233 million transfer still leaves, based on, still leaves a deficit inclusive of the balancing package of about $100 million. So it's a transfer of 233, leaving you 250 for the Jump Start priorities, but also still leaving you $100 million deficit. So that's the base math. So, so again, with this policy restricting the transfer to the general fund at 20%, you'd increase the amount available for the Jump Start priorities from that base 250 to about 386 million. And then, that then has a direct implication on the deficit, though, because, again, in the base case, the assumption was that there'd be 233 million and you still had $100 million deficit. That would imply, then, that the deficit goes from $100 million to about 236. But again, you have significant resource available for the Jump Start priorities.
Thank you. Councilmember Morales has sponsored the amendments. You're recognized.
Thank you. Just as a clarification, I did not intend these to be two separate amendments. I don't know if it makes a difference one way or the other, but that wasn't my intent. So, thank you, Ben. I know there was a lot of work for you, particularly in the last few days, so I appreciate you helping us get through to this point. Colleagues, I know that we all know how critical it is for us to approach this budget in a fiscally responsible way. And yet, we have before us a budget with, that includes $75 million in new spending from the mayor. We have added another $25 million. Much of this is ongoing spending. And so the fact is that we do have a structural budget problem. As Ben pointed out in a previous meeting, in 2027, we go back to having a deficit. Chair Strauss mentioned, it will be enormous if we don't sunset this bill, or if we do plan to sunset it. Even if we do use this payroll expense tax, though, we have had a structural budget issue for well over a decade. I remember asking people in the budget office over 10 years ago what some of the challenges were. So I know that this has been a longstanding problem, and it's something that we can't wait to resolve in four years from now. I believe we should have been grappling with this all year, rather than assume that the payroll expense tax was going to solve our issue for us indefinitely. Clearly, it is not. We still need other sources, or we will be back here facing a deficit in a couple of years. I do appreciate Councilmember Moore calling the question with her bill to create a capital gains tax, and I have two slides that we'll be adding to the discussion later. So this amendment would acknowledge the need for additional general fund, additional support for the general fund by allocating 20% payroll expense tax revenue, starting in 2027, so it would maintain the transfer for this biennium, which would, I think, estimated be about $88 million. I do want to clarify that my amendment also does intend to have a 10% reserve. That's not clear in the memo that we have here. But it also acknowledges that what we heard from hundreds of people last night is that housing and community development and small business investments from the payroll expense tax are part of the solution to our homelessness and housing and public safety crises. And what we can't ignore is that whether it's $100 million or $200 million deficit in the next coming years, that's not the point. The point is that we need new revenue to address basic city services. So the proposed shift of more than 50% of general fund, to general fund for this biennium, I believe should be temporary. And while I understand that this council may have different priorities for how this revenue source should be spent, any permanent changes should be done through a public process, just like we do for other major revenue streams, like our levies, and like we did for this very source. We should start that discussion now, and so that's part of the reason I appreciate, again, Councilmember Moore raising the question. Finally, as Ben mentioned, it does restore the oversight committee. This is an accountability measure. It is a measure that we have for all of our other major revenue sources. Our levies in particular each have one. I don't understand what the resistance is to sitting this body and convening it to help us understand how this is working, where we might need tweaks. And particularly, given that these taxes are collected from our local businesses, I would think that an oversight committee would be welcome. So this is, again, as we have said all morning, a chance for us to really begin the discussion of how we're going to plug the hole. I don't think we can wait for four years to start having serious conversations about how we address this, because in four years, we could be in even worse shape if we don't start addressing it now and figuring out how we're going to fill the gap that we have in the city. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions, comments on these amendments? I will just say, Councilmember Morales, I completely agree, the level of funding that we have used from Jump Start in the general fund that we used this year is not something that is sustainable, that this, we were responding to the issues that we had at hand. I will politely push back in saying that we're not starting the conversation in four years. We started the conversation earlier this year. We're having the conversation this year. We're going to have it again in two years. We're doing, we're doing that work now. No one else has anything to say? You've got last word, if you'd like it?
I'm good, thank you.
Fantastic. Councilmember Rivera, do you have on this? Okay. And then, Councilmember Morales, you'll have last word.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to, I agree with your point that you just made there, and I do think that every budget year is an opportunity to have the conversation again, because ultimately, we're the ones that, the mayor sends the budget down, we decide what to do with it. We make ads based on what our priorities and what our constituents' priorities and the city's needs are. So every year is an opportunity to revisit everything, really. And so I just wanted to make, underscore that important point. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Morales, anything else? No, moving back to you, Director Noble.
Okay, there is a third proposed amendment, this one from Councilmember Moore. We take a slightly different approach to defining the priorities for the use of the Jump Start funds. In particular, it would limit the general fund support to 45% of the total proceeds and then allocate the remaining resources exclusively for affordable housing. So, again, using comparable math, as I went through before, in 2027, that would mean $266 million for Jump Start funding for affordable housing. There's a bullet I meant to add here that I'm going to get to at the end, I apologize for this. So the, the funding for the revenues, excuse me, the revenue stabilization account, I'm having trouble with that today, would be provided by both the automatic year-end transfer, but then also by transfers from the general fund, so not from the payroll expense tax resources themselves. Of the funds that are transferred to the general fund, the intent, and this is the bullet I meant to add, would have, would put priority on the Jump Start, original Jump Start priorities themselves. So again, there'd be significant resource available to the general fund, but of that resource, the priority would be the Jump Start categories, presumably other than affordable housing, because that would be addressed here. So the implication here, again, is significant additional funding for affordable housing. The implications for the deficit are small. It's about an additional $16 million. So other things being equal, the transfer of the general fund anticipated in 2027 is just over 45%. So this, this small adjustment doesn't have an impact, big impact on the deficit. I think, and just to, Councilmember Moore, to speak to more directly, but the general implication here is that affordable housing is elevated as the key priority for the Jump Start resources. The funds that are available to transfer to the general fund can support basic city services, but also with a priority around the original Jump Start categories.
Councilmember Moore has sponsored the amendment. You are recognized.
Thank you very much, Chair. And I too want to say thank you very much, Ben, for doing this, and noting that the slide doesn't represent the last point that Ben made, because that came about this morning, and this is still a work in progress, and I appreciate the flexibility. So I guess nobody should be surprised that I would be bringing something about affordable housing. And I appreciate that the mayor began this conversation. I also appreciate, Chair, that you're following up with the conversation and really trying to walk a fine line there. But I also, also very much support and appreciate Councilmember Rivera's comments that I, as much as I would love to think that we're going to be out of this mess in four years, I really don't think we are. We have a new reality, and I keep harking back to what happened. God, I don't even want to think about it, but anyway, the national scene. And we are, we need to have the flexibility to address the priorities, as Chair has pointed out, and as Council President has pointed out, you know, we are trying to address an addiction crisis through the general fund, but we don't have that listed as a priority. We had youth mental health come up as a priority, and so we had to make another box. So, and in some ways, I think that we are setting up sort of a way of disappointing people every time we come to them, because we are going to be in this position where we have to continue to utilize payroll expense money for general fund. We've done it throughout the history. It's always just been a question of how much. So maybe let's just bite the bullet now and decide... So, maybe let's just bite the bullet now and decide that we are going to set aside a certain percentage at 45% and that set the rest at 55 for affordable housing. The reason I choose that category to designate that that is required percentage, it's not, you know, should we be able to, but it is, it's designated, is because of all of those priorities, and they are all critically important. It is the one where we have a legal obligation to fulfill under the Growth Management Act. The others are, they're not a legal obligation. And so, to me, that is a compelling reason to make this a mandatory percentage that's set aside. Obviously, we can always go above, and that would be the goal, the hope, that we would have enough money to spend more than 55%. But I think we need to set a floor. And in terms of, but I did also want to carry forth the values and priorities that were articulated in Jump Start. I think that that's important for us to state that those are priorities in the general fund, so that we do not lose track of those priorities that were articulated by prior councils and that have been, continued to be articulated by people who have come here, although noting that, again, those priorities were set by smaller groups of people who tend to be more politically active. And so, there is a broader base interest, which I think we hear loudly and clearly from the Seattle residents, and as a whole, public safety is the number-one priority, and that's a general fund requirement, and housing and homelessness. We hear those repeatedly, and the pieces that are corollary to all of that. So, again, I think being forthright about the need to have continuing access to the money through general fund, to support those general fund priorities, but also making sure that we commit ourselves to a particular level of affordable housing, is why I've brought this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Colleagues, any questions, comments on Councilmember Moore's proposal? I'm seeing none. Councilmember Moore, any last words?
No, thank you.
Okay. Fantastic. We will move on to the next item. Back to you, Ben. And I know that we are moving into the proposed consent calendar. Again, colleagues, a couple of different consent calendars we're using. This is for ordinances on the budget. We'll get to the, we should probably use a different word for Group A, which is Consent of Amendments, but this is Consent Calendar of Legislation Enacting Our Budget.
I'm going to, in the next two minutes here, try to definitely move you through 36 pieces of legislation. For what it's worth, this is not particularly unusual. When the mayor sends down the budget, you might think of that as being the budget ordinance, but in fact, there are a series of ordinances that are needed to fully implement the budget, and these are among them. My goal, given time constraints, is to give you essentially a one-sentence summary of each. I have developed the working knowledge of them over the last couple of days. I have access to some additional information, so if there are more specific questions, I might be able to handle them here, but also potentially offline. And again, the goal here is that ultimately, you will be casting a single vote to approve all of these as a group, again, just really to expedite your total actions. I would add that central staff has reviewed each of these in more detail. My working knowledge is not our full knowledge. And in the, we provided, at the stage when we were doing the policy considerations, we provided you a summary of each department's budget, and at the end of that, there was a section on legislation. So, if you were curious, you hadn't already seen that, there was some write-up of each of these that was completed. So, with that introduction, the first bill, and I'm just going to go down this list, is actually a 2024 appropriations bill. It completes the allocation of money to address the wage increases that were adopted as part of legislation that you supported earlier this year. The second piece is an ordinance that establishes new fees for Seattle Center's facilities. They rent out various rooms and arena, not the arena, but smaller facilities. There's some theaters. There's a range for each of those, so, and the director has significant discretion about the exact rental rates, depending on the use and the scale of the use. The next item is an interfund loan for Memorial Stadium. Realizing this may not be, the concept may be relatively new to some of you, the city uses interfund loans as a cash management tool. So, we, the city has balances in various funds and can lend them. So, in this case, what's happening is that there's a planned debt issuance next, excuse me, in 2026, of long-term debt to help pay for the cost of redeveloping Memorial Stadium. This will give, this interfund loan will give access, Seattle Center access to that money essentially ahead of time. And the issue here is we don't really know exactly how much money is going to be needed next year as the project moves forward. And this means we can wait till we have a better sense of that to issue the actual debt, and once you do that, there are legal and financial constraints on debt. This way, this is essentially a convenience, we'll be able to move the project forward. That debt issuance for 2026 is in the endorsed budget, and there are resources allocated to pay off those, that debt. Next one is Seattle Center parking rates. Again, the various parking garages at Seattle Center, this revises the range of rates that can be charged for those facilities, again, matching both adjustments for inflation and market conditions as well. Next one is a policy change, but essentially an internal reorganization for the city. So, currently, the exams for both police and fires are run from the, from SDHR, from the HR department, in coordination with the Civil Service Commission. This would essentially, in an effort to streamline and make that more efficient, transfer the exam function into the Civil Service Commission. Next one is animal shelter fees. Again, there are adjustments in these fees, interestingly, because I looked, some of them are increasing modestly essentially for inflation, others actually decrease, reflecting essentially, if you will, market pressure. So, adoption fees go down, spay and neuter fees go up a little bit. Next one, again, is a fee that FAS charges for companies that engage in recycling, and better aligning that with the cost of actually reviewing those, and so, a minor one. Next one is, I love this acronym, HXM, is the Hearing Examiner. So, this is a fee that Hearing Examiner charges for some of its reviews, essentially an initial filing fee, hasn't been changed since 2012. There's documentation that indicates that it's well in line with what other cities' hearing examiners charge for comparable services. The next one is really obscure, the OCF HCMS Interfund Loan. This one, you probably aware of the upgrade in the city's payroll system, Workday, that is, was rolled out this year. That is part of a more comprehensive update of the city's HR systems, so the computer systems that keep personnel records and track leave and all those sorts of things. That system is more than 20 years old, and it is in the process of being updated. So, again, this is a similar situation. There's a debt issuance anticipated for next year. This gets them cash ahead of that. And as a side note, recognizing that those computer systems aren't designed to last 20 years, the term of the debt associated with the paying for that are much shorter, more like eight years. The next two items are resolutions related to the city's retirement system. One establishes the ARC, which is the Actuarial Recommended Contribution. So, the city is trying to maintain the financial health of its retirement system, actually, post the Great Recession and the market crash associated. The system fell to a situation of being underfunded. So, the city set itself on a fixed-year path to restore full funding, and this continues us on that path. The next one, again, related, is the interest rate that is essentially nominally paid to city employees. If you don't stay all the way through to retirement, you can choose to pull out the money that you contributed, and you earn an interest rate on that. This sets that interest rate. It fluctuates some with the, essentially with the Fed rate. So, it's a low, relatively secure guaranteed rate. Next item would transfer oversight and administration of the city's deferred compensation program from SDHR to the retirement system, again, looking for efficiencies in the way the city operates and giving employees a comprehensive place to work with the city on retirement. The next two ordinances impose relatively, well, inflationary increases for the fees charged at SDCI. There's one for 2025, and then one anticipating the 2026. There's a little bit of catch-up here. We had a very high inflationary period. They didn't raise rates by that much in any given year, but then sold a little bit of catch-up here, so increases, I think, 6%. Similarly, the next item, the Street Use Fee Schedule, this is fees that are charged for, particularly for construction activities that occupy the right-of-way. Property owners, builders are charged an increasing fee. It increases through time to incentivize them to not stay in the right-of-way, but again, updating those fees. STOT, as the COVID pandemic hit, it hit some of the, it had a dramatic impact on some of the transportation-specific revenue streams, particularly commercial parking tax, as an example. Decision was made at that time not to backfill that all with general fund, but to allow STOT to take an interfund loan with the idea that these transportation-specific revenue sources would come back after the pandemic, and that therefore, we'd be able to essentially smooth out those revenues, those transportation-specific revenue streams, taking advantage of the interfund loan to use some of them in 2020 and 2021, knowing that we could repay that. And this extends that loan through the end of next year, and we have reviewed the payment schedule that will confirm that payment will be complete by the end of next year, as is required. Next one lists a proviso on Seattle transportation measure. So, this is the 1.5%, excuse me, the 0.15% voter-approved sales tax that's dedicated to transit. There was a proviso imposed either last year or the year before, requiring that a percentage or an absolute amount of that money be directed towards bridge maintenance projects. And STOT has run into essentially the limit of transit-eligible maintenance projects, and knowing that the levy which just recently passed includes significant funding for bridge maintenance, the underlying policy need has seemingly been addressed. Continuing, so the fire department charges permit fees as well. They do inspections of electrical plans and fire escape routes and the like. So, those, again, modest changes there. This next item was one that was discussed, actually, during the policy consideration phase, would allow the fire department to charge in situations where it provided BLS transport services, so basic transport services rather than life-threatening. Next one is SMC fees, again, changing there. Next, on number 26, is SPD eliminating, just cleaning up their fee schedule. Again, I looked at this one, there was a fee for a Polaroid identification system that clearly is no longer in use. Next one is Seattle Parks Department, changes in their fees and charges. Again, those are both a variety of services. Changes are relatively modest, and again, the documentation highlights that they are in line with that charged in nearby areas. Seattle City Light, so this is the rate ordinance, so this increases the rates charged by City Light for '25 and '26. This was discussed at the relevant committee, potentially ran out of meeting times in September, so this legislation was bumped to the Budget Committee for final action, but was reviewed at committee. Next item would exempt raffles and bingos from the city's 5% tax on gambling. I think the major impact here, as I understand it, is on the 50-50 raffles that have become common, I personally know, at both hockey games and baseball games. Currently, they're called 50-50, but somewhere in that, there's 5% lost to the city. So, this would make them a clean 50-50 deal. The next item is actually one that we worked on with the Budget Office, we being central staff, actually, Ali Piniucci, while she was here. Here is, we're cleaning up some reporting requirements. The council has appropriately established reporting requirements over time for various actions, but sometimes those things evolve, and we don't do a great job of cleaning up reports that really aren't necessary anymore. So, that's really what this is doing, trying to align those more towards the real needs in terms of oversight and transparency. But again, that's one that we worked on directly with them. Next one is the TNC Tax Spending Plan. This is a resolution. So, this is just, again, the TNC revenues are deposited in the general fund and can be available for general uses. There had been restriction previously under a resolution. This extends the period of allowing flexible use. Next item, next three items are bonds. So, the city issues debt on a regular basis. There's classically an issuance every year or every other year for the general fund, and then each of the utilities, and they're actually, recognizing it's Seattle Public Utilities, actually three separate utilities that issue debt separately. So, these, all kind of bond issuances go through something called the Debt Policy Management or Administrative PAC. So, there's an internal review within the city. Central staff are represented on that committee, and each of the utilities have representatives. I participated in the past. There's a really good back and forth about, like, why do you guys need this? Do you need this amount? What's, what are the particular uses? So, again, these have been reviewed in that way. So, those, that's items 32, 33, and 34. 35 is the Year-End Supplemental Ordinance. So, that is actually balancing 2024 out again, making some appropriations to address new needs and the like. Again, that has been reviewed by central staff. Associated with that is the Year-End Grant Acceptance Ordinance. So, there are additional grants that have, the city has earned or landed, if you will, since the mid-year supplemental was considered in July. There's then also a comparable grant acceptance ordinance for 2025. So, we accept ordinances mid-year, but also ahead of time. The departments know with high degree of certainty about certain grants that they will receive in 2025. Those have been assumed in the budget, assumed in our revenues, but this then formally adopts those. And the last two items are what you might classically think of as the budget documents or the budget ordinances, the proposed ordinance itself, which is a clerk file. And as you make your amendments, they will be added to that clerk file. And then, the Capital Improvement Program, which you'll hear vernacularly described as the CIP. And again, similarly, it is documented in the CIP book, but if there are changes that you make, those will be added to that clerk file. So, with a deep breath, that's just, that is the full set of budget legislation that's intended for the consent agenda, so that would be a single vote tomorrow on any, on this collective. If you have questions now, happy to answer them, but also happy to answer them offline later today and early tomorrow.
Thank you. I'll just clarify, the last items, 38 and 39, are the Kirk files that are associated with the council bills. For item 38, the associated council bill is Council Bill 120905.
Actually, I wanted to clarify.
Please.
I think those are actually the proposed budget. So, it is, was it?
Mayor's Transmittal.
Yeah, it's the mayor's transmittal. So, those, that's why they are on the consent calendar, because what we will be adopting is a separate clerk file on the 19th. So, these two are just the mayor's proposed.
Wonderful. Clarifying that we will be making amendments to Council Bill 120905, which is not on this list. Ben, I had one question for you about the raffles, clarifying that these are 50-50 raffles for nonprofit organizations that provide proceeds to nonprofits that provide services.
Yes.
This is not a for, it's not the bar down the street doing a 50-50 raffle, and somebody's making money.
Exactly. And the ones that are hosted at the sports facilities are for nonprofits, they're just using that as the venue to raise the money, if you will.
For the organizations that are being funded.
Correct.
Yep, okay. Thanks. Colleagues, any questions on this? I will tell you, I have spent hours on some of these bills. I know central staff has. Happy to read you in, but maybe not on the record, because we have 46 individual items just in Groups C and D. Seeing no further questions, let's move on. I did receive, oh, Councilmember Sock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question here for central staff. Can you help me better understand, for purposes of voting and like the grouping, and like how these proposed consent calendar implementing pieces of legislation, how they differ from the proposed consent amendment package, items in like those groupings in A and C?
Yeah, Neil Adamaville speaks to this as well. The idea is that the voting process itself can be time-consuming, and at some level, potentially unnecessarily so. So, we've looked to group things that are somewhat alike. So, this is the alike set of, sort of, I'm going to use a phrase and maybe regret it, routine budget legislation. I mean, there are significant actions here, just to be clear, right? So, the idea is that these are kind of fit as a group as the base legislation. The other groups, one of them is the Balancing Package, which is kind of a defined concept. And then, there's a set of, in addition to the Balancing Package, there's a set of amendments that you all have been individually working on, that Chair Sense, working with us, are likely mutually agreeable. And again, for efficiency... And again, for efficiency, you could vote on them as a group. To be clear, you will have the prerogative of pulling out any individual item that you see is worthy of further and separate discussion.
No, thank you. I think, I think I understand that part, I guess, was less clear right now is, do any of these proposed consent calendar items, these are, these are completely separate and apart from all the groupings A, B, C, D. So it's separate, and then, which I'm seeing Yolanda nod her head, yes. And when are we going to vote on this, or when is the anticipated vote date for these items?
The intent is to vote is tomorrow.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you have concerns with these bills, please let me know, and we can push them until next Tuesday. This is where, in the past, we have taken voice votes on each of these items, and so it was about an hour, hour and a half of everyone saying yes, which is why we're just putting them on a consent calendar. The amendments in the groups are all amendments to Council Bill 120905, which is not a council bill within the consent calendar.
That is correct. So the consent calendar is legislation, individual pieces of legislation, as you see in the right column, and the packages are packages of amendments to the budget adoption ordinance. So that's just a, just a slight nuance there. The consent calendar is also familiar to you all with the city council meetings where there is the consent calendar of legislation. So that's just a minor point of clarification around the language we use on these various means by which we try to help expedite the voting process.
Great. Well, we are on item 39. I'd love for us to get at least through item 41, if not Group A, within item 42. So let's continue on.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Calvin Chow with Council Central Staff. Item 40 is Council Bill 120887. It is legislation that would have been in the consent PAC calendar, but we had to pull it out because of a technical amendment that's necessary for it. The legislation allows for spending of the Seattle Transit Measure to be spent on personnel to work on the Sound Transit III projects, as well as potentially for third-party partnerships in support of ST III projects. The proposed budget does include personnel working on the project, but does not include any partnership. The technical amendment is that there was a reference, erroneous reference related to a separate public hearing for the STBD that was not necessary, and we did not hold one, so we're removing that reference.
Thank you, Cal. Questions, comments? Let's move on to CBO Participatory Budgeting Implementation Ordinance, Council Bill 120893.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Tommaso Johnson, Council Central Staff. Agenda item 41 is the Participatory Budgeting Implementation Ordinance. You were briefed on this earlier during the budget process. The underlying ordinance would allocate $27.3 million that has been held over in finance in general since it was appropriated in 2021, and it would move that money to various departments to implement elements, different projects of the participatory budgeting selected during the participatory budgeting process. There are four amendments to this ordinance, all proposed by Councilmember Hollingsworth and co-sponsored by Councilmembers Moore and Wu. The first amendment is a version two that was revised. You have that in your receipt. This amendment would appropriate $4.7 million to the Office of Arts and Culture to provide grants to support arts and cultural preservations focusing on historically marginalized communities, such as the black community. The amendment would also appropriate $315,000 to the Human Services Department for contracted youth activities for specifically identified entities in 2025. Just to note, this part of the amendment would render another CBA HSD 35A moot. So if this passes, my understanding is that the Councilmember Hollingsworth intends to withdraw HSD 35. This amendment would fund these, the new programs by decreasing the participatory budgeting appropriations to the Seattle Parks, Seattle Department of Parks and Recreation by $5 million. The original proposal would have directed $7.2 million to parks to implement a public restroom access project involving purchase of mobile restroom units and staffing at new and existing facilities. This amendment would appropriate $2.2 million to SPR for this purpose, to implement an alternate or scaled-down version of public restroom improvements. Amendment two would appropriate $3 million to the Office of Housing to provide funding for outreach and engagement, homeowner stabilization services to increase homeownership retention in communities at high risk of displacement. This would be accomplished via a mix of work that the Office of Housing would do, as well as contracts with community-based organizations who have experience providing these services. This project would be funded via a decrease to the participatory budgeting appropriations intended for the Department of Neighborhoods, or DON. It's decreased by the same amount, $3 million. The original proposal, participatory budgeting proposal, would have appropriated $7 million to DON for urban food and farming projects. This amendment would retain $4 million to implement a scaled-down version of that same project. Amendment three would proviso $2 million of the participatory budgeting funds in the Human Services Department to fund a young adult day shelter, excuse me, a young adult day center in the Central District. This amendment would also proviso the remaining $1.9 million of participatory budgeting funds in HSD to be used for youth and young adult shelter capital improvements. Once again, the original participatory budgeting proposal related to HSD would have funded two projects at a total of $3.9 million. The first project at $2 million would be for enhanced homeless navigation services, and the second proposal, 1.9 for youth shelter capital improvements. So this amendment retains the 1.9 for youth capital shelter improvements that was included in the original proposal, and substitutes a different project for the 2.0 million, which would be the Young Adult Day Center. The fourth amendment simply amends the recitals to reflect a statement of council intent regarding the new funding priorities.
Thank you, Tommaso. Councilmember Hollingsworth is sponsor of the amendments. The floor is yours. And a practice I'm going to start implementing moving forward for the rest of the day and the rest of our budget cycle is, if you are a cosponsor, you will be second in priority and then for everyone else. So Councilmember Hollingsworth, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Strauss, thank you, colleagues, for your consideration on these amendments to the participatory budget, bringing forward to you today. I definitely want to thank some of the cosponsors that are on some of these bills, Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Wu. I also have Councilmember, or excuse me, Council President Sarah Nelson on some of these amendments as well, and particularly for the proviso for the youth development piece. And so I just want to thank you all for your support on that. Really, really grateful. The original intentions, oh, I also want to thank central staff, Tommaso and Tracy for dealing with me. I know that you all didn't have a choice, so I just want to thank you.
Point of order, Councilmember. You are a joy to work with.
Oh, okay. Is that a dad joke? That was a good one. Thank you. The original intentions of the participatory budget was to ensure that black communities were impacted. We all saw this during 2020, murder of George Floyd, and the budget, how this all arisen from wanting to make sure that communities that were, had been historically excluded were impacted. How it came about was, we had community members that were concerned about some of the outcomes and some of the buckets, and how they were reflected in some of the spending so it could impact our community. And I took, listened with them, connected with them, and came up with a lot of these amendments. You heard yesterday, some of the five points of progress for black community is homeownership and land, economic mobility through small business, health and wellness, education, and we also pair that with the arts. So often, we think of education K through 12 as being the only education for our kids, but for black community, a lot of it is the arts because of our storytelling, because of dance, music, health, all these great things that come with that piece of education as well, and then also workforce development and the trades. Just some stats here that I want to share with my colleagues. Homeownership piece, so the first one of five points of progress, today, 31% of black households own their home. In 1970, it was 50% in the city of Seattle. Economic mobility and small business, 1% of black-owned businesses, 1% of the overall businesses in the city of Seattle are black, and they only equate for 1% of the overall revenue. Health and wellness, 32% of black households are food insecure. Education and the arts, 40% of black students are ready for kindergarten compared to their counterpart at 58%. And then workforce development and the trades and jobs, the median salary for black workers in the city of Seattle is $41,000. So we carefully crafted this with community at heart and at the table to figure out, how are we able to have this meaningful impact to our community? And you heard from Mr. Johnson today about, Tommaso, sorry, I said Mr. Johnson, is that okay? Tommaso Johnson, today about the amendments that we're bringing forward to you today. The first one is through arts and culture. This would be able for individuals, organizations, nonprofits, like you heard Langston, you heard, you have Urban League, you have African Land Trust, we have The Good Foot, you have Color Girl Gardens Club, you have all these great folks that would be able to bring arts and culture into the city of Seattle through some of their events that they do, some of, maybe they want to have a speaker come to their classroom, they want to bring a national, you know, a big person to come into the city of Seattle to be able to continue the beautiful arts and culture for black community. So that's, that's really key. The second is the appropriation for homeownership and retention, and we really pushed on this to make sure that we had the proper outreach for this as well. In the last three months, or excuse me, the last eight months, I've had three really great friends lose their home in the CD in the South End to different, you know, whether it's taxes, whether it's reverse mortgage, whether a house was passed down, they did not know about what, what, what do you call it, probate was, right? These things are really important to our community and not knowing that, and so this money would be able to help with the outreach to that. A lot of times, a lot of people, we have the programs, we have the money, these people go door-to-door to talk to people and connect with folks so they can understand, you know, they don't, there's a lot of shame that goes in when people lose their home or they have high taxes. And so, you know, having the right people that are at their door that are like, hey, it's okay, come with me, let's be able to navigate you through this, I think is incredibly important. The third one, the proviso for HSD for a young adult center. We have a public safety crisis in this city. Kids are graduating high school, and then between the ages of 18 and 25, we have seen gun violence at unprecedented numbers in our city of Seattle, particularly for black males. And so with this piece, and we don't know if it would potentially be in the Central District where we've seen a ton of gun violence, or potentially in District Two as well, is where some properties are being looked at. This would be a day center for youth between 18 to 25, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. It's a already, it's already a structure that has been stood up. They just need the funding to continue to do some of the work, workforce trades, they'd also have people to help them do their resume, connect them with resources, health and wellness, just get a hot meal, right, for some of our kids that are on the experience, that are on the brink of breaking down and being able to have someplace to go, which I think is incredibly important. Last but not least, this bill also modifies to be able to recite and reflect what the original intent of this budget was, to make sure that we are impacting black communities to, for the resources that best are utilized for them to have the health and wellness, the education, the arts, the workforce development, the homeownership and economic mobility. We've also identified 12 organizations as well. I want to thank Council President Nelson for co-sponsoring this with me. We have identified 12 organizations. One of her bills that came down, that made it into the balancing package, was supporting our, our CD Panthers. So thinking about when we are looking at, you know, prevention, intervention, and enforcement, that we are funding at the levels as we're also doing enforcement, okay, with our SPD and, you know, all these things, that we're also funding the preventative piece. That is so important that we balance that out. You know, from council, we have made a lot of, a lot of bills come down for enforcement, which is important, and I've, I voted for and I agree with, but I also agree with the preventative piece as well. So, you know, people aren't getting to that enforcement piece. So that's why the preventative piece is important, funding groups that do youth development that set them on the path, you know, so they are successful. And then also, Council President made a comment too, which I want to highlight, is the food piece, that a lot of these kids are hungry, and then they get to be angry. So they're hangry, and they don't have the food, and most people don't know, a lot of times, a lot of these things happen because they don't have food over the weekend, and then Monday, Tuesday, it's just a hot mess because they haven't eaten over the weekend. And so a lot of these issues come up because they're hungry. So these groups that we've identified also do food insecurity stuff, and they do a lot of programming for youth. So anyways, with that, I'll stop. I want to thank central staff for us being able to carefully craft a lot of this stuff. I want to thank some of the community members that showed up last night in person and on virtual, and then have sent emails regarding supporting these changes, because I do believe that these really, number one, will impact community for the better, but also the intended outcomes, which is important for this participatory budget, which was the original spirit of this. I think this really aligns with what people really want. And last but not least, even though there is a food bucket that we have taken from to be able to allocate for homeownership, there's still those projects that are going to be done. They're just going to be scaled back, but we've also, and I got to double-check with central staff to see if we've added language for expanding some of their scope of work with Department of Neighborhood and so forth. So anyways, thank you, Mr. Chair. That is my long explanation for this participatory budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hollingsworth. Councilmember Wu.
I want to really correctly also add, thank you, Joy, for your leadership on this. Like you said, there are many community members who have scheduled meetings and came up to us with this concern, and as you heard last night during public comments, this sounds like a good solution to, to address many of the concerns we're hearing in our office. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you very much, Councilmember Hollingsworth, for pursuing this, and also for maintaining the funding for the Duamish, which was critically important as well. But this is going to be a phenomenal boost to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. That does bring up the one question I had, I'm going to interject here just for a process of facilitation. The slide references the modifications to participatory budgeting. Can you, Tommaso, share what aspects of the bill that we've been briefed on before are retained? And I believe that, I know the answer, but I just want to have it on the record, please.
Yeah, absolutely. So the elements of the participatory budgeting proposal in the underlying bill that are not modified are $2 million one time for care team expansion in 2025. As I mentioned when we discussed this before, the mayor's budget builds in the assumption that the PB ordinance, participatory budgeting ordinance, will fund care team expansion, the initial phase in 2025 at $2 million. That's retained. Public restroom access, as I mentioned before, is reduced from 7.2 to 2.2, and the department and CBO have indicated that the Parks Department will be able to implement a scaled-down version of that project. That project will be able to scale to that amount. Urban food and farming at Department of Neighborhoods, reduced from $7 million to $4 million. Same story there. The department has indicated that they will be able to implement a scaled-down version of that project, and Councilmember Hollingsworth, they have indicated that they are interested and favorable in expanding the scope in the way you described in the minor way, and they don't need additional authority to do that. They're on board with that. As you mentioned, the Native Youth, past, present, and future Duamish Native Youth Center is retained at the original $7.2 million amount. The enhanced homeless navigation, $2 million, which would have been implemented by KCRHA via pass through from HSD, that is a project that has been removed in favor of the day center. And then youth and young adult shelter capital improvements in the realm of $1.9 million has been retained from the original proposal. I should, I should also say that the amendments all add carryforward language to ensure that this, the project's implemented as designed in 2025 and beyond.
Thank you, Tommaso. Councilmember Hollingsworth, I see your hand again. You also have last word.
I, that is not, I, old hand, I apologize. Thank you.
Councilmember Saka, then Councilmember Kettle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and so thank you, Tommaso, for clarifying that, the important features and specific elements that have been changed, retained, or modified in any way, that really clarified my, you know, uncertainty and confusion that I had about its impact. its impact on those original items that were originally proposed, and the mayor's original proposed participatory budget investments. And so very glad to hear that the $7.2 million for the Duamish Long House project is retained, it's in my district, it's been promised and committed to, to that community years ago, and it's important that we actually finally deliver. And so I'm, I'm thankful that this, well, first off, for the leadership, thank you, Councilmember Hollingsworth, for championing this, really important, you know, collective, holistic approach that still allows us as a city to live up to some of those original commitments to the Black community. And also, I thank your cosponsors as well, Councilmembers Moore and Wu, for, for, you know, allowing us to get to this point. I strongly support this bill as amended for the reasons that I mentioned, and thank you again for bringing it.
Thank you, Councilmember Saka, Councilmember Kettle, followed by Councilmember Rivera and Nelson.
Thank you, Chair Strauss. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say just a few things. One, I wanted to thank Councilmember Hollingsworth's leadership on this issue. It's so very needed and, and it's, it's key. I also want to thank Councilmember Hollingsworth for being a trusted advisor in this area for me. Her insight, her lived experience, everything that she brings to this is very important as I look at these issues and the budget and just in general. And so I look at her as a trusted advisor, and I think she has also been a key link for me to individuals and organizations, many of whom we saw and heard from last night, so I thank her for that. And I also thank for them for coming last night and speaking on behalf of their, their groups and constituencies. Looking at the original legislation and where we're going, it's, I'd also think that Councilmember Hollingsworth would probably be a great link to the executive as they look to work up next year's program for HSD, DON, and other key departments. The last thing I wanted to say, and Councilmember Hollingsworth brings up a very important point, I think right now is a fantastic time to, to expound on it, and that is the preventative aspect. So many times in committee, the Public Safety Committee, I talk about leading with compassion, having empathy for those individuals, you know, that are in crisis and similar conditions, but then having the, the wisdom to look at for the fuller community and the, and the neighborhoods involved. You know, I also talk about you can't succeed in public safety without also succeeding in public health. But, you know, as we got to the end of this first year and working all the points, as Councilmember Hollingsworth talked about on the public safety side, it is important to have the, the, the human services in a more general context from what I said, to have that piece there. And this is important for, like example, with our SOAP bill, which I believe now has engendered a great increase in terms of resources for the women and girls that have been affected in that, in that piece. But it's also here too, you know, something where we can help those individuals, particularly the youth and young adults, which is so key, and it's not really been a, a main focus for the Public Safety Committee, but it is something that is vital in terms of that balance with the public safety and then the human services as represented by Councilmembers Moore's Housing and Human Services Committee, to ensure that we're helping those in need and in, and as many people said it last night, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, and this is an area that, that can really be so important. So I think it's important to highlight this preventative piece, the human services piece, the public health piece, and those angles in terms of their companion kind of efforts to what we've been doing on public safety. So again, thank you, Councilmember Hollingsworth, and for the cosponsors and for those that are supporting. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Kettle, Councilmember Rivera, and then Nelson.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to also lend my voice of gratitude to Councilmember Hollingsworth for doing the work and working with community to fulfill the commitment to community. I know Mayor had sent down the package. I very much appreciate his doing so, and then also just appreciate Councilmember Hollingsworth for, like I said, working with community to fine-tune the, the proposal, because I know that she did work with community to put this forward, and we know that this is what is needed in community, and we heard last night, these items are what community support. And I want to particularly underscore my appreciation for, you know, the youth, that is a big piece of these amendments. And then also, on the homeownership side, you know, our older community, because we know that a lot of the folks that are in danger of losing their homes are folks, are our older folks who now are living on fixed incomes, and then when their property taxes go up, they don't have resources from which to pull from to be able to keep their homes. And so I very much appreciate the attention to both on the youth end and the, our, our older, because I don't think personally we do enough to support our seniors and older folks in community across the United States. So I very much appreciate your putting this forward, and I very much support all the work that went into this, and I, and I very much support this. So thank you, Councilmember Hollingsworth, for really lending your part, along with the mayors and the various folks, and really many of us here for, if all of us here, for really highlighting the importance of keeping their promises to community. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Hollingsworth. If you didn't already have two cosponsors, I would request to be a cosponsor. So let that be on the record that I fully support this, and I, I thank you for doing the work. You know, you stepped into a project that had been sitting on the books for a long time and was almost to the point of being wrapped up with a bow, and then came in and made some important changes. And I do appreciate that your changes also keep in mind some of our expressed, not necessarily concern, but wish that the, that what we're funding does have an ending date so that we, that we make sure that the community understands what, how to, how to take it forward. And so, and last but not least, thank you very much to the Office of Civil Rights. This has been on their books for a long time, and I just want to express appreciation for that. Yes, King County also did a participatory budgeting project, but it was $5 million, I believe, or $3 million. And it's a lot easier to give away a small amount of money than it is to, to delegate $27 million because of, because the stakes are so high. So everybody at the, within the executive that worked on this also, I just wanted to extend thank you and a congratulations, and also to Councilmember Morales, who's been with this for a really long time. Thank you.
Other colleagues, I'll share my comments, and then I'll pass it over to Councilmember Hollingsworth for last word. I want to thank the staff in OCR for delivering this program. It was not an easy pathway forward, and clearly, your work has delivered because it, all of the programs are still being funded despite some changes at different levels. My reflection is that, some, a fact, that the Black community is not a monolith, and what I reflect on from last night is that we heard a united voice, and that was really important. I'll say the one thing that I said the last time this was before us, adding funding to Black organizations and Indigenous organizations, allocating money, funding, and resources to these types of organizations should not be a one-time action or a moment in time. What we have before us is a reaction to the murder of George Floyd, and this can't be a one-time practice or a moment in time. Councilmember, and thank you, Councilmember Hollingsworth, for all your work. Over to you for last word.
Easy last words. Thank you, Chair Strauss. I'm so glad that you all brought it up, and want to thank Office of Civil Rights Director Derek Wheeler Smith for his work on this. I know that he stepped in on the tail end of it and continued the, the process, so thank you so much. Also want to recognize the Executive Office, you know, we were talking to them during this process to, to make sure that we were kind of aligned with a lot of the values that they had, have expressed as well. So definitely want to thank our, our Executive Office. And then I also want to thank, obviously, our, our central staff for all their help, and then also the other city departments that had been allocated money. And, you know, for us to come and say, hey, would you be okay with this, and would you be okay with that, and them talking about those things with our central staff and really being open to this, as we know that it was already kind of baked and, you know, put the bow on it. And I'm actually going to go down the line and, and thank all of you. Thank you, Council President, for your early support on this and, and leadership. Councilmember Saka, thank you for supporting the Duamish piece and saying, hey, how that important that is for your district, and making sure that, you know, this, we're making the, the promise, we're keeping our promise, you know? I think it's incredibly important. Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. I know you've spent a lot of time on the phones from different people in the community who've expressed their, you know, support for this, but also, you know, had tough conversations with folks about things. So just thank you. Councilmember Morales, you started this, and I just, no, I'm, I'm serious, you started this ball. That is incredibly important, and just want to thank you for actually starting the ball for us to get here. You know, I'm just trying to run through the end zone with it, you know, you can be Russell Wilson, whatever you want. Well, Russell Wilson didn't hand it off to Marshawn Lynch, so don't pass it. Hand, you know, whatever it is, okay? We'll just get, we'll just get, we'll just talk about this as maybe a first down. Thank you, Council Chair Dan Strauss, for your leadership, but also your advice about how to navigate things and how to move through stuff, and, you know, just really, really the insight that you have has been incredible. Councilmember Moore, thank you. You've been incredibly supportive since day one, and, and, you know, your leadership as well, like just incredible. So thank you, and your sponsorship. Councilmember Kettle, thank you. You can't, you come with me into places that, you know, a lot of people don't look like you, you know? Those are hard to find in the city, but you come in those places, and you listen to people, and they give you the feedback, whether it's tough or it's not, you know? And you listen and you take it, and I really appreciate you absorbing that. And thank you, Councilmember Wu, for your support on this and your sponsorship, and just being like, hey, whatever you, you know, whatever the community wants, thank you for that, okay? So anyways, with that being said, thank you. I hope we can earn your support on this for participatory budget, and that is all I have. So thank you, Chair. And hopefully, I didn't forget to thank anyone, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hollingsworth. For the record, I am missing Pete Carroll this year, and don't pass the ball in the end zone. Run it, run it, run it, run it. With that, colleagues, I'm going to do a little bit of a time check for us. We're going to go on lunch recess for 30 minutes, coming back at 1:30. What we have before us are 118 items in A. Not all of them will be deep dives. That's two hours where if every one of those items only takes one minute, which it will take longer, that's two hours. We then have 46 items in Groups C and D. We only have one item in Group B, so I'm just not talking about it. If we spend one minute on each of the items in Groups C and D, that is 46 minutes. I know central staff will take a minute, and I know that each of us will take longer than a minute, so let's give it two. If, if, with running that math, that's 90 minutes. So we will come back at 1:30. If we, the earliest we will get out is 4:15 on this projection. If we go longer than, if we hit the two minutes per item in C and D, we will be out at 5:00 PM sharp, which makes Councilmember Moore late, it makes me late. If we go over two minutes, I can't tell you how long we're going to be here, we will be here until 6:00 PM at the latest. So that is where we are. Any questions or comments? We will be returning, and I am so serious, it's not funny, be here at 1:30 because this is a really tight ship right now. We're, we're, we are right barely on time. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. If there's no objection, the Select Budget Committee meeting will be in recess until 1:30 PM. Hearing no objection, we are in recess until 1:30 PM.